I'd like to call the meeting to order. I would like to ask our student board member, Ms. Rosenbloom, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
You did that very well. Thank you. Next up brings the 1.3 approval of agenda. Moved in second. Are there any changes? Vote, please. Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Ochoa? Somebody gave me the wrong list. Oh, Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Ms. Goodwin?
Good evening and thank you President Tillman. My name is Mary Rhone Goodwin and I'm the Director of Communications and Community Relations. Tonight, the Board of Education will recognize an outstanding community partner along with the diligent efforts of our students, parents, and employees for tonight's outstanding awards recipients. Before I introduce our awards presentations, I'd like to invite our board members, our Superintendent Mauricio Ariano and Executive Cabinet to please make their way to the reserved seating in the front so that you can enjoy a special presentation in honor of Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month. In a moment, we will welcome district students who will provide us Samoan Siva cultural presentation under the direction of cultural practitioners Auntie Nicole Kenahili Stutz and Auntie Vi Matuatia, with the Young Samoa Scholars. First, we will begin with Auntie Nicole, who will provide an oli which derives from Native American culture. At this time, Auntie Nicole, would you please make your way forward by using the ramp to my left? Audience, please put your hands together and give a warm SBCUSD welcome.
Mahalo, everyone. So, in Native Hawaiian culture, an oli chant is always given with intention. And for this evening, I had originally thought about what is my intention for the students of San Bernardino City Unified School District? And usually, that's a no-brainer. But this evening, I thought, you know, this is a school board meeting. So, what is my intention for the school board? Talk about school board things. So, Eho Mai means "Grant Us Wisdom." And that is what the intention was here this evening. Grant us wisdom. Grant us wisdom to see the small hidden things that we need to see when making decisions. So hopefully, there's lots of wisdom floating around the room this evening. Mahalo.
So much. Now, audience, I'd like to welcome Auntie Vi, who will also be presenting a cultural representation representing the islands of Samoa.
Hello, community talofa. My name is Vi Matuatia, also known as Auntie Vi in the community. I am the Executive Director of the Young Samoa, which stands for serving all mankind arlofa. And I stand here representing our ancestors from the island of Manua, American Samoa. Samoa is one of the many Pacifica islands. We are grateful to be here today to honor our Asian American cousins and our Pacifica community from our district and our wider community. Our Pacifica culture is centered on family faith, preserving and preserving our culture. We are some of the best navigators of the ocean and have contributed greatly to our community through our love to educate and unify. One of the many ways we educate is through telling our stories through our culture siva. Siva means dance. The Young Samoa youth will be opening their performance to a short rendition of a commonly-known Samoan song, Lo Ta Nuu. This song means a lot to the Samoan people. It's a significant and celebratory pride and patriotism for the respected and loved island of Samoa. Yeah, TYS will perform a siva, Talausamoa, a song about the beauty and love for our beautiful motherland. Today, we are joined by the San Bernardino City Unified School District and the Young Samoa Organization scholars who attend George Brown Elementary, Arrow View Middle School, and the Tri-City Community Day School. Thank you.
Talofa Samoa loa tunu pelele anganga. Aese yo upese pese atu mafala matala. Lo matano fiele mapaye ukunafa amatala. Ua numbe retasi po ioe ile Pacifica. Lausamoa e, lausamoa e. Faamua muale atua oia lo faava e. Ah, oh mai ni puapuanga. Faama lo situma opea. Ote alova iate olausamoa. Ne mapayo na ngalolo unu usa ofana wai. Olaufa nuala nula wava o te tiwai. Eui na omalanga ipa oia atu nuu ese. Ela mapayo na na lo oesamo laukele. Lausamoa e, lausamoa e. Faamua muale atua oia lo faava e. Ah, oh mai ni puapuanga. Faama lo situma opea. Ote alova iate olausamoa. Lausamoa e, lausamoa e. Faamua muale atua oia lo faava e. Ah, oh mai ni puapuanga. Faama lo situma opea. Ote alova iate olausamoa. Ah, oh mai ni puapuanga. Faama lo situma opea. Ote alova iate olausamoa.
Well, as a proud Pacific Islander Filipino, I want to wish you maraming salamat. So, thank you very, very much to all of our students, including our Young Samoa scholars, for your incredible cultural presentation. Board and Mr. Ariano, I would like you to join our students and our aunties here for a photo opportunity.
Board and Superintendent, we ask that you remain standing for the next presentation. Executive Cabinet, would you please take your places along the ramp at this time? Thank you. Thank you once again for providing such an incredible presentation. Audience, let's give them another round of applause. My name is Maria Garcia and I'm the District's Communications Manager. It is my pleasure to emcee the Community Partner Award segment of tonight's program. Our Community Partner Award recipient will receive a special plaque made by our very own Bing Huang Elementary students. This month's Outstanding Community Partner Award recipient is the nonprofit Shoes That Fit. This organization has made a significant impact on the lives of our students. Shoes That Fit has been a steadfast partner in our mission to support the well-being and success of our students. Their generous donations of thousands of new shoes have not only provided essential footwear for students, but they have also instilled confidence and dignity in every scholar who has received a pair of brand-new shoes. And that includes our scholars at Jones Elementary, Bing Huang Elementary, Richardson Prep High, and Shoes That Fit has just coordinated their largest distribution to date. That is a distribution of 1,700 pairs of brand-new shoes. These will be given to every student at San Bernardino High School later this week. Please put your hands together and help me welcome Shoes That Fit Chief of Staff Julie Stevens to accept this award and provide brief remarks.
Thank you so much. We are so honored to be receiving this award. As you mentioned, I mean, you did a great job describing what we do at Shoes That Fit. You know, in America, 1 in 3 children live in a low-income family or in poverty. And our mission is to tackle one of the most visible signs of poverty in America by giving children brand-new athletic shoes so that they attend school prepared to learn, play, and thrive. Shoes are one of the most expensive items for families that are on tight budgets to be able to afford, and kids grow out of them so quickly. And by addressing this basic need, being able to provide them for families that are struggling financially or have tight budgets, we do so many things. And you mentioned so many of them. You know, it's about confidence, being able to attend school with their more advantaged classmates and feel confident, not be embarrassed, be confident enough to engage socially, being able to participate in a group sport, which is so important when kids are growing for their social skills, you know? Comfort. And when kids are wearing shoes that are too small because their parents can't afford to buy them as their feet grow so quickly, it creates so many health problems for them that often get overlooked. And then just the joy, the joy. You know, we're about making them smile, making them feel like they matter. And we are on the heels of that $1,700, $1,700 child giveaway that's going to be on Thursday at San Bernardino High School. And we're all geared up and we're excited to just bring more and more service to children in San Bernardino. Thank you.
Thank you once again to our Shoes That Fit partners. We're going to move along with our special presentations and begin welcoming our outstanding awards recipients at this time. My name is Carla Cross and I work in the Communications Department. You'll give me just a moment. For your patience. For those of you who do not know, the Outstanding Awards Program stems from our Board of Education's desire to recognize our outstanding, our high-performing, our entirely well-grounded, motivated students, volunteers, and staff who give their all to our students and to our school sites on a daily and regular basis. Tonight's honorees will receive a certificate of appreciation from the Board, from 5th District Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. They will also receive a yard sign so that they can say that they are proud SBCUSD students. And they will receive tickets for their family to attend the San Bernardino Symphony. Audience, I would like for you to keep in mind that this next segment will take about 15 to 20 minutes in total. So if you could do us a favor and return to your seats after your honoree is recognized, that way, everyone has the benefit of the SBCUSD cheers. So, thank you very much for that consideration. Honorees, when your name is called with you and your family members, please make your way down the ramp where my colleague there, Maria, is getting everyone teed up and ready to go for the first school site. You'll come down that ramp, you'll make your way to the front. After you've shook the hands of our Executive Cabinet team members, you'll make your way here to the Board with Superintendent Ariano. And you will take a photo with everyone before making your way back to your seat using this ramp here to my right. So, if we are ready. Anton Elementary, are you ready? You're up first. We are now welcoming Principal Melanie McGrath to the front. Principal McGrath, please join us at this time. Thank you so very much. And, audience, we've got to get this energy up because some of SBCUSD's favorite students are in the house tonight. So, keep it up because our first SBCUSD student hails all the way from Anton Elementary and is kindergartner Serenity Thompson. Let's welcome Serenity. Ms. Serenity was nominated by her teacher, Cecilia Martinez Guzman. Serenity is a native English speaker in the Dual Immersion Program. She exceeds standards in both English and math. And she's quickly working towards fluency in Spanish. Way to go, Serenity. We're all so proud of you. Big smiles, everyone. Next, let's welcome 4th grader Kiran Sumel. Kiran, let's go! Kiran is a student in Teacher Tina Jones's class. Kiran is a highly gifted scholar who consistently exceeds state standards in English and math as well. She is creative, humble, perseverant, and she works well with other students. She wants to help students be successful at school and improve their mental health. She plans to become a school counselor just like Dad. Way to go, Kiran. Big smiles, everyone. Next, we want to welcome a volunteer at the campus, none other than grandparent Mr. Leonel Beza. Mr. Beza, please come forward. Leonel supports the Anton School community by consistently attending special events and family nights. He volunteers whenever he is asked, and he is always willing to answer any technology questions that may come up. On behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you, sir, for your involvement and your commitment to Anton. Congratulations on your award this evening. Please help us welcome Teresa Sanchez Munyes. Teresa is a bilingual clerk who goes above and beyond in all that she does. She is professional under all circumstances, and she keeps Anton running efficiently. She serves our parents, students, staff, and community members with passion, commitment, and dedication. In a word, she simply helps Anton shine. Thank you, Teresa, for all that you do. Next, let's put our hands together for Dulce Maria Beck. Dulce Maria demonstrates emotional commitment and a deep sense of purpose for serving children with special needs. She is empathetic and compassionate as an advocate for students with special needs. Her commitment to service is outstanding as she collaborates with parents, students, teachers, and administrators to ensure our students receive the supports they need. Dulce Maria, we thank you for your leadership and service to Anton Elementary School. Audience, let's keep that energy high. We are now ready to welcome Emmerton Elementary School Principal Laura Ramos. Principal Ramos, would you please make your way forward? Audience, are you ready? I have two more SBCUSD favorites coming our way. So, please keep that energy high. Big cheers as we welcome to the front Ms. Mariana Rodriguez. Mariana is an outstanding student in Stephanie Guzman's 4th grade class, where she is a Model Emmerton Eagle Scholar. Mariana is a friend to all and is involved in Broadway Now and the District's Expanded Learning Program. In the future, Mariana wants to be a 3rd grade teacher at Emmerton Elementary School. We're so proud of you, Mariana. Thank you, and please keep up the good work. Audience, we have another one of our best that we're going to present. This is 4th grader Yuna Walsh. Everyone, put your hands together for Yuna. Yuna is a 4th grade student in Teacher Annie Reyna's class. She has exhibited grit and determination as an Emmerton Eagle Scholar and good scholarship as well. She is involved with Broadway Now and music at school. Yuna would like to be a doctor. Yuna would like to be a doctor so she can help people. We're so proud of you, Yuna. Congratulations on your award. Keep it up. Audience, please help me welcome outstanding volunteer Adlemi Castillo. Adlemi, would you please make your way forward at this time? Adlemi is always willing to come support Emmerton Elementary, its students, its families, and its staff. And she has served for many years on ELAC, the school site council, and PTO. Adlemi, on behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you so much for making Emmerton a great place to learn, and congratulations on your award. Let's keep the applause going as we welcome Stacy Smith Ford at this time. Stacy serves the district as an instructional tutor for learning and physically handicapped students. Stacy always goes above and beyond, even in the most challenging of situations. She is a champion for special education students, and she also mentors new employees, providing them the supports that they need to do their job successfully. Thank you, Stacy, for all that you do on behalf of Emmerton Elementary School. Our next Emmerton Eagle is none other than 4th grade teacher Stephanie Guzman. Stephanie, would you please come forward? Stephanie is one of many dedicated teachers here in the San Bernardino City Unified School District. She also exhibits a positive attitude. She is a member of her site's avid leadership team. She tutors students to help them understand challenging concepts. She makes learning fun and does all that she can to support student learning. Stephanie, we thank you so much for your leadership and service to the Emmerton School community. Shandon Hills, you're up next, so please get ready. Please help me welcome Dr. Perseda Torres, principal at Shandon Hills Middle School. In just a moment, we'll be introducing our two standout students from Shandon Hills Middle School, one of two. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together as we welcome Ouzvaldo Amarogil. With a flawless 4.0 GPA, Ouzvaldo is a model student and leader who excels in his studies, setting a high standard for his peers. He embodies the spirit of Shandon Hills through his hard work, positive attitude, and unwavering dedication to making the school a better place. He is interested in attending Caltech in Pasadena and pursuing a career in computer engineering or real estate development. Congratulations, Ouzvaldo. Perfect, thank you. We have another standout student at Shandon Hills Middle School. Please put your hands together for Caesar Burguenio. Caesar is a shining star at Shandon Hills, who has consistently exhibited resilience, determination, and a strong commitment to excellence. He's attended Shandon Hills from grade 6 through 8. Caesar has demonstrated remarkable progress and achievement. For the first time, Caesar has proudly secured his spot on the honor roll, a testament to his hard work and academic prowess. Caesar, we are so proud of you. Great job. Next, ladies and gentlemen, audience, please help me welcome our next honoree, bilingual attendance technician Francisca Rodriguez. Francisca has made an extraordinary impact since joining Shandon Hills at the start of the school year. She consistently exceeds expectations, and her dedication to supporting our diverse families is evident in her attentive approach to connecting with them and providing access to crucial resources and delivering exceptional customer service. Her approachable demeanor makes her a trusted and beloved figure among parents, students, and staff. Thank you so very much, Francisca, for all that you do on behalf of Shandon Hills Middle School. Up next, please help us welcome bilingual math teacher Mari Sol Monteano. Beyond her academic duties, Mari Sol exemplifies dedication and passion for her students' academic growth and takes a heartfelt interest in their overall well-being, building genuine professional relationships with students and their families. Her approachable nature and open communication foster both trust and mutual respect, making her a well-respected figure among her students and her peers alike. Mari Sol, thank you so much for your leadership and your service to Shandon Hills. Cajon Cowboys, you're up next. Tonight's final Outstanding Achievement Award School goes to our Cajon High School Community Principal Dr. Chris Jackson. Would you please come forward at this time? Audience, we have another one of SBCUSD's bests that was ready to come forward at this time. Please put your hands together for Alexandra Gilbreth. Alex, who is a senior this year, is the embodiment of a committed cowboy. She has earned herself a 3.75 GPA. She is a member of the aquatics program, and this year she serves as the associated student body president. We cannot wait to see all the wonderful things that young Alex will accomplish in her future. Way to go, Alexandra. We have another wonderful student in 12th grader Javier Cueto Sanchez. Javier, please come forward. This Cajon cowboy has earned himself a 3.7 GPA. He is a cross-country athlete. He is a leader in the Cadet Corps program, and he's completing the automotive technology pathway, having taken all three years' worth of courses. Javier is sure to excel in life and represent the Cowboy Nation with distinction. Congratulations, Javier. We are so proud of you. Cowboy Nation has selected volunteers Carrie and Kevin Gilbreth as their outstanding parents. So would we please put our hands together for Mr. and Mrs. Gilbreth as they make their way back to the front. Kevin and Carrie continually rise to the call for any and everything they are asked to do. The Gilbreths are an integral ingredient that compromises the secret sauce of what makes Cajon High the special place it is. With both of their children being alumni at the conclusion of this year, we hope so much that they will continue to stay connected to this very special school community. Thank you, Carrie and Kevin. Our next Cowboy Nation honoree is custodian 2 Maria Alvarado. Let's put our hands together as we welcome her forward. So not only does Maria possess an exemplary work ethic that results in impeccable craftsmanship in her duties, but she does it with a perpetually positive demeanor that helps set the tone for many members of the Cajon family. We are so grateful for all the hard work and positive contributions that Maria makes to the Cowboy Nation on a daily basis. Congratulations, Maria, on your award. Thank you for all that you do. It's time to announce our final outstanding award honoree for this evening, program specialist link learning Elizabeth Kakary. Elizabeth, please come forward at this time. Elizabeth is the embodiment of a bolt of lightning in her enthusiasm, energy, and passion for her work. Her commitment to her pathway teammates goes well above the call of duty. She is constantly chasing the best possible systems and outcomes for our students. And for that, Elizabeth, we thank you. Congratulations. Superintendent, Board, Cabinet, you may return to your seats at this time. As I wrap up, I want to thank our gracious audience for showing your support for all of tonight's honorees. I want to send a special thank you to 5th District San Bernardino County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. and the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra for supporting this evening's honorees. Honorees, please be sure to stop by Vicki in the in the back there to pick up your yard sign on your way out this evening. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Sandra Rodriguez, who'll be introducing tonight's special presentation, which focuses on this year's achievements, insights, and skills gained by members of our Student Leadership Advisory Council, better known as SLAC. Dr. Rodriguez, the floor is all yours.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cross. So President Tillman, Vice President Sabayos, esteemed board members, and our shining superintendent, we are so excited today to be able to share with you some of the accomplishments our student leaders are doing here in our school district. As many of you already know, we have a Student Leadership Advisory Committee Council that consists of middle and high school students. And so I'd like to bring up to the podium their advisor, the wonderful Mr. Doctor Robert Moss.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I've had the wonderful pleasure of working with the Student Leadership Advisory Council for the past two years. I'm now the former coordinator. But you don't want to hear me talk, so I will introduce the students who will be explaining what SLAC is all about. Ms. Daisy Rojo, Crystal Scott, Hemina Pressiado, I have trouble saying that one, and Silvana Vasquez. Ms. Daisy Rojo, Crystal Scott, Hemina Presciato, I have trouble saying that one, and Silvana Vasquez. Thank you.
Wow, I haven't talked up here and I'm a student board member. That's crazy. Okay, hi everyone. My name is Silvana Vasquez. I am a senior at San Bernardino High School. I have participated in SLAC for about two to three years. And it is such a pleasure to be up here and be able to discuss such a wonderful, such a distinct program that offers students to be able to talk a lot about what our schools need and what our district needs to provide and how we as students can do an impact in our community. So before we get started, we'd love to give big thanks to Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Moss for keeping SLAC organized and funded this school year. We'd also like to thank all the facilitators Rebecca Huff, Cindy Pimental, Alma Jimenez, Shannon Miller, Bonnie Elias, Carlos Solario, Shelley Branford, Michelle Rogers, Matthew Mori, and Mr. Pollitt. So we'd like to discuss what is SLAC? SLAC is a student-driven organization that is led by Dr. Moss, which gathers a group of students from high school and middle school to the San Bernardino School District. What is the purpose? The purpose of SLAC is to increase its student voice while developing leadership skills. We engage in service projects not only for our district but for community as well. Right now, we'd like to bring up Crystal Scott to discuss with you guys restorative practices.
Hello everyone. My name is Crystal Scott. I attend Cajon High School and I am one of the leaders for restorative practices and peer mentoring. So in SLAC, just to give you some information, we have four groups in total. We have campus involvement, we have community pride, we have peer mentoring, and we have restorative practices. We split them down the middle into like two groups into one side and two groups into another side. So for, well instead of, well, community pride, we have like marketing on the other side. And then we have community service, which is Ms. Jessica, Camelia, myself, and Malin for restorative practices. We have Silvana and Hemina for campus involvement and Tatiana for our marketing. So my part is SMS, which is students mentoring students. So we focus on like mental health, students, their environment, I guess you could say, and try to make like their school campus a better place. Our mission would be to like provide a stepping stool for our students to like make them feel safe, make them feel better about like where they are. And our main focus would be wellness centers, I guess you could say. I know multiple high schools have them, but some of them don't. And we want to focus on that because it's been like a real stressor for us. Because I know in my wellness center, I've had like good days and bad days in there where things are going well and things aren't going so well. So it definitely needs like improvements. So for us, like, basically, a wellness center would like lift up the voices of our students if they're having like a good day or a bad day or if they're having like a mental health crisis or any type of like issue, they need someone to like talk to. They have a trusted adult or a counselor in there, right, to like provide like advice or like information to them. And so I actually got like a small video from our counselor. Okay, this is our head counselor and she does most of the things for our students. So she has like a few words to say about Cajon High School and what they've done so far.
Hello, my name is Toni Williams and I'm the counselor here at Cajon High School. I have the pleasure of sharing information about our wellness center. Our counseling team supports students with access to the wellness center to provide additional social and emotional support. When students need a calm, quiet, and safe place, the wellness center is available daily. Students are able to self-refer via our e-hall pass system and students are also welcome to access the wellness center during their lunch. The wellness center services continue to grow as Cajon's counseling team offers interventions like small group and one-on-one support.
Okay, so basically like our main focus would be the students because like you know they're our future and everything and we care about them so much. And this is like, this is going to impact students of like all ages. So we're trying to get them in high schools, middle schools, even elementary schools because like even though the kids are like very young, they still have mental problems. Like we can't just push aside like how they may feel because they're children. So we wanted to like make sure that we created an environment that students can use where they can openly express themselves. Recently, like I know a student who had an issue or an altercation in the classroom like yesterday and she was upset, she was crying, so she left to the wellness center and then she came back and then she was fine after that. So I actually took time to get a video of our wellness center to give like a brief explanation of what might be wanted at high schools and middle schools. Okay, so in that video you can see like there was bean bags, comfy chairs at the table and seats to like sit at and need if there's ever like, oh, I have an issue with you and you have a problem with me. Can we like talk about it, like spaces like that. There's also like fidget toys, soft things, because I know like some kids, they get upset, they get violent. And instead of like trying to like, you know, like blow up the flame, you just gotta like step back and let them express just for a little bit, like get it all out. And that's what we kind of need to like help manage these students while they're in a confined space for four years straight with the same people. Because it can get a little irritating seeing the same annoying faces. Because I know some kids just like can't get along. They can't like mingle for that long. I know it's hard for me as well. But the benefits of it on the campus would be how to manage our mental health. It ties them sort of practices and it can improve peer mentoring. So we have our students like Ms. Alasia Nash, she came up with the idea to create like groups that focus on those who deal with like drug abuse, those who can't stop drinking, those who can't stop fighting. And it's very important to not like throw rocks at our kids because of the issues that they may have in life, but to instead like uplift them and try to comfort them and bring them out of it with like peer mentoring and by like restoring like the things that they go through with like love and care and tenderness instead of being like, oh, you're this, you're that, you're drinking this, you're drinking that. Things like that happen because of like things in our life, they probably go wrong or we have issues. But like really, I think our students just need like love and attention to like bring them back to where they need to be. Now we'll move on to Daisy Rojo to talk about our SLAC eagles.
Good evening. I just want to say we're very grateful to have this opportunity as students to be around more students and just hear each other's voices and take action. And we appreciate all the support and funding that this program has. And we do have goals for next school year. I know this summer we do want to plan to have training for teen mental health first aid. And it would, we really appreciate that funding to have all students in the program and all SLAC members, students, to be a part of this training. And I know this training will not only impact themselves as students, but also their schools, how they can support one another as students, again, students mentoring students. So thank you so much for this funding. And now we'll move on to the next presenter, Tatiana Eden Ochoa, who will be presenting the marketing.
Wow, you guys look even better looking down here. Hi, I'm Tatiana and what I'm a part of is the marketing part of SLAC. And Student Leadership Advisory Council, we recently got a lot of middle schoolers. And something that they're really interested in is specifically marketing. Because what we do in marketing is all those keynote speakers that we see in everything, which is like range from Joe Baca or Helen Tran or all those individuals. What we've been trying to do is try to like interview them after or try to see what exactly we're getting from them or what is our experience with SLAC overall. And a lot of these middle schoolers or a lot of our high schoolers are very creative. So marketing has been able to not only make videos and just overall share the message, but share what Student Leadership Advisory Council is. Because even in or at a Student Leadership Advisory Council, we want to make sure we're making a difference in our community. So those are some of our members, but we have like over 20. And that's not including any of our wonderful middle schoolers who have really been involved in this and have really taken to it. Because it's somewhere they feel like they could step in and really have their voice heard. And I know that marketing not only is something that applies to everywhere. I mean, I see San Bernardino marketing everywhere and I think that's wonderful. But I think that overall, Student Leadership Advisory Council as a whole has many separate groups, all individualized, and making sure how can we make the biggest impact in this individual area. And that's what marketing has. And I've been very fortunate to be a part of that. So thank you very much.
So as you have seen on the previous slides, you saw various pictures of us participating in various opportunities for community pride. I believe that the Student Leadership Advisory Council, also known as SLAC, is a huge opportunity for us to be able to participate and be involved in our community as well as being able to connect with our people such as our students, whether it's elementary, middle school, or high school. So what is community pride? Throughout our work in Student Leadership Advisory Council, everyone involved has had the privilege and opportunity of being involved in community pride initiatives. An overlooked aspect of our experience, spreading community pride, was learning about what exactly makes a community. Part of that is acknowledging a common purpose. Community better off than when we got there shows that ability for us as students to be a positive force for change within our communities and others. This view essentially encapsulates the meaning behind community pride in regards to taking initiative and making a community we can all take pride in. So what are community pride goals? The goal of community pride this year was to enhance teen involvement in the community throughout the acts of services. This year, students in this group went out their way to help with the cleanup day at Santa Monica Pier. Not only did we spend time cleaning up in order to have the best functioning group, we also dedicated a time for team bonding exercises. Just to clarify, we did have this presentation ready last year, so last year we did go to Santa Monica. This year, we were able to participate in the trunk or treat and various other opportunities for students to enhance not only their volunteer skills, but as well as their leadership, communication, and group work skills. Thank you.
Good evening everyone. My name is Hemina Presciato and I will be continuing presenting community service. So I want to touch on past and potential involvement. Community pride is essential to San Bernardino because we are the largest country in the United States. Showing that we take care of our community, we want to continue cleaning up our local parks, recreation centers, and beaches. Cleaning up the trash around our community will improve our environment and the safety hazards that can be caused by trash. Next up is recent campus involvement. This year, in the subgroup campus involvement, we continued the idea we had last year in implementing the different world, the word kindness through our school. In this group, we have students from different high schools start a kindness event on campus and rewarding students who showed active kindness throughout the campus before going and realizing that we are very different schools and come from different high schools, academic rigors, have different academic goals, home life, and extracurriculars. What brings us all together is the San Bernardino School Unified School District and more specifically, the community in which surrounds us, San Bernardino.
Well, thank you so much for your time. And lastly, we'd like to acknowledge Dr. Moss as this was his last year with us. So we want to thank you, Dr. Moss, for all your time and dedication to this group. Thank you.
I just wanted to say again, thank you, Dr. Moss, for these wonderful past two years. It has been such an honor and a privilege being able to work with you as well as enhance our community and being able to enhance our schools. And to anyone or any student in middle school or high school watching this, we really hope that you can participate in SLAC this next year. It is not only an opportunity for you to grow, but it's also an opportunity for you to be able to make connections with other people as well as being able to use your voice and represent your students. Thank you.
And I want to say thank you to the Student Leadership Advisory Council, all the members of that council. You students are truly amazing. Each time you get up and present yourself, I am in awe. You're so articulate, passionate about helping others. It's just wonderful to have this many leaders in our district doing so many good things. We have, I'm gonna have Ms. Goodwin come up. You all are gonna be acknowledged, some of you can be acknowledged for the leadership role as student board members. We have questions, hold on a second. We have questions and comments. Let's start with Ms. Medina.
Yes, thank you so much. I mean, it's always impressive just hearing our students and the work that we've been doing and the work you have all been doing and getting involved. And it is a community effort. I was just curious on how our students are recruited? And is there specific requirements for our students to participate in the SLAC program?
Hi, so I'll be answering this question. From what we are acknowledged of, the Student Leadership Advisory Council is comprised of seven members from each high school and three to five students from each middle school. Based off of the leadership and abilities as well as their communication abilities at how they do at school, how passionate they are to serve our community, they are selected through the teacher who is the chaperone, I guess you can say, or the main leader of the high school. So for instance, at San Bernardino High School, we have Mr. Markane Pollitt. And he selects seven students who he thinks has the best leadership qualities as well as being able to improve their communication skills that he thinks would be able to make a great impact through the SLAC community. So was that the only question?
Perfect, no, that was great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Chahaski?
First, I want to say thank you to Dr. Moss for taking SLAC to the next level this last two years and to all of our student leaders who really helped push the agenda of this thing. But I do have one, that's what I did the mic, but originally we were looking at students wanted a cross-section so that we're actually getting input and information from students across section, not, so are they, are we also looking at students from diverse backgrounds, LGBTQ, maybe some with lower grades or you know, minor discipline issues? Are we also still looking? And that might be a question for you, Dr. Moss or Dr. Rodriguez, in terms of what we're looking at.
So Dr. Moss, the awesome Dr. Moss, is now a vice principal at two campuses. So we're phasing him out. But in regard to the question that you had, yes, of course, we want to have a representative base of students. And so we do have students who are C students, students who had struggled but brought up their grades. We have had students who have had some issues with chronic absenteeism as well as students who homeless foster and CalSafe kids. So we do have students who are from our continuation schools, so Sierra, San Andreas. We are working on building virtual academy representation, but because their primary mode of education is online, our meetings are in person. So we will work something out to continue to be more inclusive.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. I think our Student Leadership Advisory Council is probably one of the best things we do to encourage student voice and student input in the work that we do. So I really appreciate you expounding on what and who participates so that we can continue to support and build the program.
Absolutely. And one of our other goals, so this year we brought in middle school. So we're trying to expand the voice. Next year, or the next couple of years, we'll be phasing in upper grade elementary students. Again, because we want to have representation from all grade levels or at least all levels of students here in the district.
Sorry, one more question. I know I went through the mental health first aid class and for me, it was like a no-cost thing with the county. Is there a way for us to be able to get that for the kids?
Yes, we actually have been working with our Swiss department to be able to provide that service to all of our SLAC members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sabayos?
Well, first of all, thank you so much for that wonderful, wonderful presentation. And thank you, Dr. Moss. Good luck on your new position. So just to kind of, I guess, piggyback off of the conversation about the selection criteria and stuff like that, I think that that is one thing that has been mentioned before. It's really important for us to kind of see a diverse, you know, student body representation. So the question that I had mainly was, I heard one of the students say that they had seven students from different high schools and then I think three to five students from middle school. My question was going to be, what is the capacity, right? My question was going to be, what is the capacity, right? So what, you know, what is the space? Because I personally would like to see one student from at least one student from each high school. And then depending on how big the high school is, you know, maybe two from the larger ones like a Royal Valley or Cajon. You know, I I want to be able to see a little bit more equal distribution and representation across the different high school campuses.
So I don't I don't understand the question because we do have at least four to five from every high school.
Okay.
Yes, so we do have a representative group from every high school, so it's not just one student. We have had some challenges with our continuation schools because of the the rolling enrollment that they have because they 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 come in in different blocks. So we've had some challenges in in having consistency from Sierra and San Andreas, but our other schools, the other high schools and middle colleges are all very well represented.
Perfect. So that was the question that I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Alexander?
I'd like to compliment the students on their presentation. Great job. Dr. Rodriguez, I have a question though regarding just the recruitment for the elementary schools and the middle schools when it comes to capacity. Could you just explain a little bit more about that?
Well, we're still in development on that, and so we are looking at fifth and sixth graders and looking at some of our bigger campuses. And so we will continue to to develop that. We'll be working with our Family and Community Engagement Department as well as our Positive Youth Development, so that way we can make sure that we can have kids transported as well as getting teacher advisors for for the group. But I think right now with the middle and high school students, it's been pretty robust. So I do foresee us getting a handful of schools, probably second semester of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Ms. Grande?
I just, I want to congratulate all of the student board members for this year. And I agree with our other board, our board members, how impressive you all are, how how beautiful your souls, your words, your brains, your minds. It's been just incredible to hear you and and to know that you have not even graduated from high school yet. You're already at this supernova level. So I want to ask you or implore you really to, when you do get to your university, I don't know which ones you are going to go. Please get involved with your Associated Students, Inc. There's a world out there that needs you, and that is the finest experience you could possibly imagine, especially if you're a female. And nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand, I ran for office at Cal State San Bernardino. And I was the first Latina student body president there. I was the first, I think the second female. And it's just mind blowing, all the opportunities that you see, you see the world in a whole different light. And you have volunteers, a million dollar plus budget. And at college, university levels, those are actually scholarships. So you have an additional source of income for helping your fellow man. Okay? Don't forget.
Something I would just like to add, because I think not only are you very inspirational overall with everything you said, thank you very much, but one of the really beneficial benefits that Slack has given to us this year is actually bringing in college advisors several times throughout this year. And they've discussed to us just not only the college process, they've given us direct connections to advisors who we could discuss to with our application, with anything like that, but they also have discussed to us things like deciding to go to school abroad. And those are all things that a lot of kids in Samaridino are not very educated on a lot of times. And I think the fact that Slack has given that opportunity for high schoolers to start thinking about it since it's like in the next two, three years, but also those middle schoolers who are like, I want to go to Paris for school, that sounds so cool. I think that it's been overall just not a diverse, I I would also like to add to like the diversity points, a very extremely diverse group of students, but I feel like the knowledge that we're getting is so beneficial to a lot of students who are not able to get that. And I think that's just what Slack has been so beneficial because it's inspiring us to get involved, inspiring us to go to college and to not just do college, but do college well.
And I, and I'm only going to take maybe three or four of you, but from the student board members, if you want to, I just want to know what struck you the most once you started attending the school board meetings? What was the one thing that was really something that stood out to you?
I think that, in my opinion, something that stood out as being a student board member is being able to give the opportunity for students to voice their opinions. You get to see so many students who feel so overwhelmed having to talk about how they feel or not knowing how to truly express. And so being able to be a student board member and represent them and being able to voice their opinions in a different way. I think that that's such a huge honor and such a huge, like, I can, I have no words, like, being able to give that opportunity for students to express how they feel in a different manner, it just makes you feel happy because you know that there are students out there who are shy and don't have that ability to talk out there, but you being the representative, for instance, at San Gregorio High School, it's it's such an eye opener because it makes you realize that you want to do more, that I want to do more for my community and being able to help future students or future people who don't have that voice or who feel like they don't have that voice and open them up to realize that they do have that voice, so.
Thank you.
So I think my experience as a student board member has genuinely been one of the best things I could have done my entire high school career, and I'm so happy that I have another year, so that's very cool. But not only that, I think that as a student board member, I think that not only are we able to have like this platform to be reaching out to students and being like, what change do you want made, but we can try to advocate for that change being made. And I think that's so much better than just feeling like we don't really have a voice when students are like, oh, like, what what do you dislike about your school? Oh, yeah, that sucks, instead of actual action towards making change. And I think that's absolutely wonderful. But as a student board member, we've also been able to go outside of just Samaridino and really broadcast and network with other schools. And something I would like to mention is that specifically the Samaridino student board members, not we're only a very prominent force at the California CSB, but also we're still actively interacting with them. And just recently, we were asked, members of us were asked to record videos. And we, me and Crystal were a part of the group that had the idea and actually ma- made a student board member district video diary for the entire California. So not only things like that, but I think that not only feel like my voice is actually being heard, but that I could actually make change. And I think it's wonderful to share what is happening from my perspective, but being able to go outside of my perspective and understand what is happening at board meetings, because I didn't even know this happened before I was a student board member. And I'm a very active student, so I couldn't imagine other students and how they're feeling, the avenues of how they can make change. And I know that I've been able to share that with them because I want their voices to come here as well, and I think that's super important, so.
Thank you.
Great question. So what struck me the most when I started to first attend my meetings is, I would kind of describe in two words, importance and responsibility. I, you know, I knew that being a student board member was an important thing, but once I started attending the meetings, I was like, oh, wait, I have a lot of responsibility. You know, I am representing all of these kids that are not able to talk about how they feel. And not only am I just representing, you know, like, the group of kids that I hang out with, no, I'm also representing the people that I don't talk to, to the people that are introverted, to the people that, you know, are shy to come up and talk about their problems that they that they have at school. So having that responsibility and that sense of importance gives me a lot of like honor to be up here. And I am so honored to come back next year and not only representing San Gregorio, but also representing San Andreas because it is me and community representing San Gregorio. So I am also honored to represent San Andreas for next year. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I would say when I started attending the meetings, the thing that struck me the most was the effort that actually goes on behind the scenes. I think being a student, you don't see the school board or the members working to solve issues or do much. You just kind of feel like nothing's happening, especially as a student, because change does take a while. So I think coming in as a student and getting to sit in on the board meetings and witness the like two hour closed sessions where you guys are discussing how to benefit students or witness how long it takes you guys to come to a decision what's best for our students was really helpful and it really made it easier for me to communicate with my other students because where they were asking why isn't this happening super fast, I can say it is happening, but it's a process and there is work being put into it.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. What stood out to me the most about being a student board member is being part of the decision, decision making process. I started, started off coming to meetings as being literally here and making public comments and advocating for mental health and for community schools, and now being able to part of, being part of the decision making process and being able to see like the process and understand like how everything works has definitely like made me like learn like, okay, like, it's a lot of steps and it takes time. And knowing I'm able to be part of the change for like future generations and I know I'm making my community better for future generations, like students in elementary that still have like many more years ago in this school district, makes me happy and proud. And thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. For me, I would say like coming to the board meetings was very special to me because when I was younger, I didn't know who you guys were. And everywhere I went, I would hear like bad things like, oh, they don't care about our kids. They just sit in their seats all comfy and they just talk about what they want, nothing ever happens. And all I do is take the money and take it home. I'm like, oh, okay, that's how it is, then I guess I don't know, I don't want to deal with it. I don't want to go nowhere near them or their politics or whatever they got. But as soon as I got here, it was really like aligning on how everything did work. And I realized that all those years complaining I spent, I could have spent them actually doing something and being like you guys, like. I don't know if you guys were able to hear it or if you guys heard it, but at the the student board member, like their, their, their senior recognition night, I was like saying a lot about all of you, and I don't think you guys were able to see it. I'm not sure if you were. No, okay, well, I'll just, I'll just say it over again then. I first started with Dr. Scott Wyatt. I just want to say that you taught me perseverance because you work hard no matter what, and I see you at almost every event. And then I talked about you, Mr. Ariano, and I told, like, I said that you taught me to be like genuine in all my work, and you keep everyone's best interest at heart. And then Ms. Alexander, as I stand here dressed like you, you're one of my favorites. You've taught me to thrive in my community, and you helped me join the utilian program and got me interested in like into my, it's my culture and into things like, like sororities and the Divine Nine and stuff like that. And then Ms. Mickey, she teased me to be cordial. I see how she works with people and it's amazing. Like, any problem that would go down, she's able to just sit there, level headed and calm, and she thinks, and then she speaks, and I'm like, dang, I need to work on that. It just, it seems so difficult. She does it so perfectly. It's like, I have a long way to go on this. And then Mrs. Mary Ellen, she always looks so nice. Every time I see her, she's always dressed to her vest. And it's just like, I need to like step up. So you see me, I've got my jewelry on, I try to put my heels on and everything to match Ms. Mary. And then Ms. 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 Grande also, she also taught me to be like a, a, a very good listener and to like, you know, sit here and like listen to those who like speak, but then also like take what they say and then use it on, use it on her, on her, on her own self. And then Ms. Subios, she's so very nice and kind all the time, like no matter what happens, she just keeps smiling. That's hard for me because I have RBF, so it's really difficult to just like show what I like really mean. Like, sometimes I'll be, I'll be like super happy, but you can't tell it because I'm not smiling at you. I don't want you to feel like sad or anything, but really, I'm just really happy to see you and talk to, talk to you. And then Ms. Medina, she's so pure, like she's so like true to her own self. Like, she always expresses herself through her work, her actions, the, like, the many things that she just ties herself into. Like, I went on the, the website scrolling through you guys' information because like I was scared of you guys whenever it's worked here. So I did my research and I was like, wow, she does a lot. I'm a little impressed. And then of course, Mr. Tillman, he's very powerful and he shines very bright, and he is very honest with himself. He's like, no filter, but everything that comes out of him is just right. Like, even if you might not like it, he's right though. Like, you can't, you can't say anything about it. But he's just right, like you gotta shut up and just listen, because you already know, like, when he, when he looks you dead in your eyes, he tells you, no, this, 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 like, okay, yep. I'm sorry. Go ahead. But yeah, like for me, my experience is like learning more about you guys. And I like, I just really wish you would just come out like to the schools, like come out to the assemblies and just like, you know, show who you are because the moment these students get to know like the real you, they'll begin to like trust you more and like put their faith in you more like how I have through this past year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. What struck, what struck to me about being a student board member was it allowed me to learn more about the board. Because I would always see pictures of you guys like everywhere, and I was like, who the heck are these people? And so I like no idea. And I just thought, and it was, it's it's so cool, like, knowing that like younger me was going to be here someday. So I think that's really cool. And it was genuinely, genuinely a great experience being surrounded by so many wonderful people, like Ms. Mickey, Ms. Rodriguez. Yeah, that's, I mostly thought of them. Sorry. Yeah, but just the rest of the board too. You guys were nice people. I would always, you guys would always say hi and just really welcome, so welcoming. And also, it was really, it shows how much responsibility it takes to be in this position. Because before, I would just think that they would just do whatever, if whatever benefited them. Excuse me. But now I know that they go through many steps to achieve the right path for this, this district. And also, it was an eye opening experience coming to board meetings because I didn't know that there was many serious stuff. I didn't even know that board meetings happened. I thought it was just a district and we were just under them. So I think that's really cool and really valuable knowledge that I gained from those board meetings. And I enjoyed being a student board member because I got, I got the opportunity to be with the rest of the student board members, which they helped me through and through. And it all, and also, having this position allowed me to get recognized at school. I know that there would be some instances where I would just get out of class and then there would be some random teacher. I was like, hey, good, uh, good job last night. And I was like, thank you. So I just felt, I felt, I like, I felt seen. Yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I will make this very short and sweet, but I wanted to thank Ms. Chahaski and Dr. Rodriguez for bringing me into this because now I get to see that we get to have a purpose and a like voice to other students that can't say anything or that can't feel like they can say anything because they are either shy or they just, like, they feel like it's a burden. But now, since there's, there's all of us, we get to actually represent our school and other kids. So thank you to those who showed up. And I wanted to give a bigger shout out to my mom for coming and supporting me and being able to to come and just support us. So thank you.
Right. Good evening. What struck me most was the opportunity to become more involved. I thought Slack was the most I was going to do during high school because I just was so happy and excited to be with Ms. Chahaski. And I just got so connected. I never, I never thought she was going to leave us. So I had to follow her, of course. And though it was my main reason, I I was really struck to to stay here and be with my fellow peers. I wasn't going to do it alone, and I think that's what really motivated me because I wasn't just the only voice. I was going to have multiple students encouraging one another. And I'm so grateful for you to have the opportunity for not just to be one, two, or three board members, but nine. And I'm so grateful to have this opportunity. And now my senior year, I can't imagine leaving, but I'm so grateful to to see you, work with you, and be a part of this district. Because I know I one day want to become like you and become as involved and a leader and administrator. And I hope you know how much this built my character, my leadership. I hope you know how much this built my connection to this district. Because it's definitely made an impact on me and it can make a bigger impact for the next. Cause it's definitely made an impact on me and it can make a bigger impact for the next generation. Thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you.
And just to close, I just wanted to close real quick. I wanted to thank Mrs. Chahuski for everything that she's done. She spearheaded this work. Um, met with these kids. She was their advisor before she retired. And she's crying. She's a proud mom to these young, uh, young people. And they really have blossomed over this year. And it's just so special to be able to showcase kids, every kid, not just the valedictorian, not just the kid who's got the four point five or four point seven or the virtio so, uh, pianist. These are the kids of San Bernardino City Unified School District. And these kids are powerful. They are resilient. They are the very best that this community has to offer. We have a girl going to Harvard right here from San Bernardino, from this team. So thank you to all the work that and support that you've given to all of us.
Ms. Chahuski.
Sorry, I didn't mean to lose it. Um, but I, it, you know, some of these kids I worked with before I, I left, um, retired from teaching and, and ran for the board and you know, being able to create, help create our student board, uh, member program in its current iteration was something, was an honor and something that I'm very proud of. And I am amazingly proud of all nine of you. You guys, uh, are just, I cannot tell you what a great reputation you have, how much, um, of an impact you've made on my life, on all of us, on, on your peers and, and on the cabinet and everyone that you have, um, spoken to and touched. And so, um, you know, I can't remember which one of you talked about the impact you had at CSBA. Um, but Dr. Wyatt and I were at the CSBA delegate assembly this weekend. And I, 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 one of the things that the kids have been talking about was the agenda that they had for the student program. And so I went over to the, to, to the woman that, uh, runs the AEC, um, to, to ask, tell them, you know, some of their concerns.
He tells what these acronym means.
Uh, I don't know what AEC, annual education conference, I think. I'm like, I don't know what it stands for. CSBA is California School Boards Association. That one I can tell you. Anyway, so she, um, I went over to say, hey, you know, that, is it possible that you don't tell them how to read a, uh, agenda in December when they've been here on the board for six months already. And she said, you know, she's like, you're from San Bernardino? She's like, we'd really like to have your kids present next year at AEC. They want them to present not only in the student portion, but they'd like them to present in the adult portion as well. So, um, I, I told Dr. Rodriguez last night, but, um, I know I'm telling you guys at all. But that's the kind of impact when, when you've got kids that they remember them and they ask if you, they can represent not just us, but all students at a conference like that. It's huge. So kudos to you guys. I can't wait to celebrate you here now. And thank you, uh, Mr. Ariano and, and Mr. Tillman for allowing us to do that.
And let me say, um, you know, we used to have one student board member. That's how it used to be. And they would come for the whole year. So when Mr. Husky told me she wanted nine, I was thinking, she crazy. Who would want to have nine school board members? And this, but she has so much energy and passion about it. And when she was going through this selection process, every, every step of the way, she was just so excited. And I truly didn't know what to expect. And I really thought it was gonna be unmanageable, to be honest with you. Um, but once you student got here, it just was amazing. And it was, uh, definitely the right thing to do. But I, I gotta give a lot of credit to, um, Ms. Mr. Husky. Yeah, let's give her a round of applause.
Need to also give credit to Ms. Nicole Post and Mr. Ken Martinez.
We will understand, understand. But, but what I want to say is, you know, there's always this, um, when you get a new board member, they bring things with them. And whatever their person, they were doing their personal life before they come to the board, that becomes part of that board member. And the worst thing to do is try to say, now that you're a board member, you have to disconnect from all that. I say, now that you're a board member, then you get to bring all that, uh, expertise that you have and it's of value to the board. And the board can use that to do things that we would have never done if you, that individual board member had not became a board member. And Mickey is a perfect example of that. And you guys are the result of Ms. Chahuski and her lifetime experience doing the work that she has done. That's what enabled this to take place. So thank you, Ms. Chahuski. And thank you to all the student board members for making her look good. And now I'll turn it back over to Ms. Goodwin.
Well, thank you, President Tillman. I now invite the members of the board and superintendent to please proceed to the front of the dais for this final presentation. Executive Cabinet members, if you can join Dr. Rodriguez once more to receive our next honorees at the ramp. Board of Education is proud to honor these nine students who served as student board members for the 2023-24 school year. Of the nine student board members, four are graduating this year and will be presented with a special stole to be worn during their commencement ceremony. Our first student board member is Anna Victoria Chavez from San Bernardino High School. Congratulations to Camila L. Zatma from San Gregorio High School. If you're, if parents are here, you're welcome to join the pictures as well. You're welcome. Before we move on to the next, um, student board member, if we could have the family of Anna Victoria Chavez for a photo. From Pacific High School and Jeanette Rosenbloom. From San Gregorio High School, Jimena Preciado. From Cajon High School, Tatiana Eden Ochoa. The whole family is welcome to come on down for a nice family photo. No peer pressure or anything. Audience, please give a warm welcome to our first graduating senior, Antonio Hernandez Nunez from Arroyo Valley High School. As of the, of the base, Antonio is our future voice-over artist for San Bernardino City Unified School District. You have another cowboy in the house. Please welcome Cajon High School's Crystal Scott. From middle, college, high school, please help me welcome Daisy Rojo. We'll do one more group photo with all of our student board members. Thank you, members of the board, superintendent, and cabinet. This concludes this evening's special presentations. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to board president Danny Tillman.
Thank you very much. That brings us to 2.4. Resolution in recognition of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. I'd like to ask Board Member Medina to read that for us.
Thank you so much. Whereas it is the right of every student regardless of gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation to access a free public K-12 education, and whereas the district recognizes all employees are valued members of the school community regardless of their gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation, and whereas the district also recognizes that the families in our community come in many different forms, and the district values all our students, families, and caregivers regardless of gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation, and whereas LGBTQIA+ Pride Month is celebrated in June to honor the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Manhattan, which was a tipping point for the gay liberation movement in the United States, and was originally intended to recognize the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals had on history, and whereas LGBTQIA+ youth are more likely to experience mental health issues, to drop out of school, and to attempt suicide than their non-LGBTQIA+ peers, and whereas policies and programs that promote education and awareness of LGBTQIA+ issues can reduce incidence of harassment and bullying and create an environment where every student can feel comfortable embracing and expressing their sexual orientation and gender identity, and whereas every student regardless of their gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, or biological sex characteristics receives a well-grounded education that meets all their academic, social, and emotional needs, and whereas San Bernardino City Unified School District is committed to creating a welcoming and safe school environment for LGBTQIA+ students, staff, families, to making and to making our school community welcoming and safe to all. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District joins others around the state and nation in recognizing June 2024 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education urges all students, staff, community members to respect and honor our diverse community and to build a culture of inclusivity and equity all year long.
Move. Second vote, please. Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Ochoa?
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion passed. Section 3, 3.1, receive public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, and fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Our first public comment comes from Ms. Ashley Betis Alcala.
Good evening, President Tillman, Vice President Zabios, Superintendent Ariano, esteemed members of the Board and Cabinet. I am Ashley Betis Alcala, the proud president of the 3,000 members of the San Bernardino Teachers Association and speaking on their behalf this evening. First and foremost, I want to give a shout out to our student board members. Your teachers appreciate you. All the educators in our district appreciate you. You often have shared comments that have echoed our comments at these meetings, and I want to sincerely thank you for your service on behalf of your students, fellow students. I also would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to our cabinet members and our board members who joined us last Thursday at our Monty Awards Ceremony, your support for our retirees and teachers who have tirelessly served our students, and community is deeply appreciated. I also would like to thank the Board for recognizing that June is LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, as well as supporting our second annual pride event back in April. It's extremely important that we are loud and proud as a district to support our LGBTQIA+ students and our employees so that they know that this district is a safe and welcoming place for all. I also want to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of our SBTA executive board members and our site representatives as this year comes to a close. They have been exemplary in their dedication to serving our members, not only through representation, but also by fostering strong relationships with our school administrators, and their presence at these school board meetings and participation on district-wide committees have been invaluable. I also want to thank our principals and vice principals across the district who have embraced the involvement of SBTA site representatives and other members in their leadership teams. Your collaboration has enriched our schools by leveraging a diverse range of talents and knowledge to address our various challenges. And lastly, SBTA wants to acknowledge our classified brothers and sisters this week as it is Classified School Employees Week. Thank you to our colleagues who support us in the classrooms each and every day and also make our sites look beautiful. Without their dedication and commitment, our mission to provide high-quality education for every student would be unattainable. And as we close out this year and move forward on to the next, we eagerly anticipate continuing these positive relationships that we have cultivated and we are proud of for decades in this district. Together, we are committed to continuing to make SBCUSD shine, as well as being the best school district to work in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betis Alcala. Our next public comment comes from Ben Pratt.
How's that? Sorry about that. I've never been here. Again, my name is Ben Pratt. I'm the Vice President of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, which is the Electricians Union here in San Bernardino. I see some familiar faces up there, and I'm really happy for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the IBW. First of all, I would like to thank the members of the Board that I've already spoken to for your accessibility. Dr. Wyatt has been a great friend to us. Ms. Medina has had wonderful conversations with us over the years. And what I'm really here to talk about is pathways for kids going forward, for our non-college-bound children. We feel like they deserve wonderful opportunities as well. You know, what we're basically offering is a five-year education after high school that costs them nothing and will result in a six-figure income for them. So our goal is to cultivate relationships here on this board and in this district that are going to help facilitate that, build a relationship with this district that will lead to a situation where we have local talent rebuilding this city, and we create a sense of pride for these young men and women as they rebuild this city. I personally have lived here my entire life. I went to San Bernardino schools and had great San Bernardino teachers, and I know that we have outstanding kids, and they deserve outstanding opportunity. Finally, I'd like to thank the district again because we're having our first pre-apprenticeship graduation at San Bernardino High School this Thursday. I know a lot of you are already aware of it, and I appreciate that. Again, Mr. Wyatt, I appreciate the help of that. This is kind of an experimental program so far, but what we're looking for is kind of a way to streamline their entry into the IBW. And although I am here on behalf of the IBW, I would encourage that all labor leaders come in here and have this conversation with y'all because y'all have been so accessible to us. And again, I just really appreciate it, and I'll be reaching out soon, you know, to hopefully have some more dialogue and move this thing in the right direction. And again, thank all of you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. And man, that was a tough act to follow, man. You know, congratulations to those great kids, and that's all I got. Thanks a lot.
Hold on one second. We have a comment from Mr. Husky.
I thank you for all that you do to help our students. I also believe strongly in the trades and what they provide for families and the infrastructure. My question is, when is the celebration on Thursday? Because I haven't gotten any information on that, so...
It's 4:00 PM at San Bernardino High School. And my understanding is it will be in the woodshop area there. And again, this is our first time doing this, so it's been a little bit bumpy. And if our communication has been a little bit bumpy, I apologize for that. We'll try and do a better job reaching out next time earlier.
And it's this Thursday, right? The 23rd?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So, all right. I have a college, one of our high school graduations, but I'm going to try to come before that.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ms. Medina.
My apologies in advance. I won't be able to attend. Thursdays has been really difficult for me, but I'm just really excited the fact that you just came down to speak and really showing all those that, you know, we want to make sure others that are part of the labor movement as well, that you're welcome when it comes to apprenticeships and educating our students because there is an alternative for many students and a really good alternative when it comes to their income. So, thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ben, great to see you and glad you were able to make it. And I apologize. I thought it was Friday. So if it's Thursday, I'll be there. Just wanted to let you know, and we'll get to talk more about pathways for our students.
Outstanding. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. We look forward to working with you.
All right. Thanks a lot. Have a good evening.
Ms. Ann Pearson.
Think it's still on? Yes, all right. Good evening, Board President Tillman, Vice President Zabios, Superintendent Ariano, Board members, Cabinet, and our audience. I'm here to discuss EXL's 66ers Day. So, on April 19th, middle and high school expanded learning students, we call them our BIGs, took their annual field trip to San Manuel Stadium to watch the 66ers against the Quakes. They were able to experience a live game and various activities throughout the venue. This event provided a fun, engaging experience for our students. They learned about teamwork, sportsmanship, and just enjoyed time with their friends. We also had the honor of having our Superintendent Mauricio Ariano throw out the first pitch and also engage with our scholars throughout the night. And there was a pitcher that was actually catching for him, and I know he doesn't want to brag, but we have it on video, and that pitcher said, "Nice slider." So, just saying, he represented us well. Thank you. We have it on video. So tomorrow, May 22nd, our littles, our elementary students, will take their annual trip. This time, the 66ers are going to be playing against the Stockton Ports. Game time is 6:35, and you are all invited. We will have the honor of having our Board President, President Tillman, throw out the first pitch this time. Thank you very much. And we are inviting our Board and Cabinet to join us. We're providing jerseys to our board members right now. I know you didn't receive one last year, so we're fixing that. And then we just want to thank you for support of our expanded learning program. And I forgot to give a shout out to my coordinator, Laura Vega, who joined me tonight as well. So, we just look forward to seeing you if you can come out tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. 6:30 tomorrow. I will. Thank you. And that brings us to Section 4, 4.1, Public Hearing and Acceptance of the 2024-2025 Classified Work Calendars between San Bernardino City Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, Chapter 183. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Are there any public comments for the hearing?
There are none.
Seeing none from the Board, I'll close the public hearing. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the 2024-2025 Classified Work Year calendars between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and California School Employees Association, Chapter 183. Entertained motion? Second. Been moved by Mr. Husky and second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion passed. 4.2, Public Hearing and Adoption of the 2024-2025 Inland Career Education Center Calendar. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Vote, please. Ms. Chavez?
Aye.
Ms. Ochoa?
Aye.
And Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carried. 4.3. Public Hearing for the San Bernardino School Police Officers Association Initial Contract Proposal Successor to the San Bernardino City Unified School District. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Any comments?
No.
I'll close the public hearing. Be resolved, Board Education received initial contract proposal from the San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. Entertained motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Husky, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Motion passed. 4.4, Public Hearing and Adoption of the SALPA Annual Budget Plan and Annual Service Plan 2024-2025 Special Education.
So moved. Second.
Let me open the public hearing first. Any comments for the public hearing? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Now entertained motion?
Move.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please. Motion carried. We had one public comment that we overlooked, Ms. Daisy Rojo.
Good evening, once again, Superintendent Ariano, Board President Tillman, Board Vice President Ceballos, Board members and Cabinet. My name is Daisy Rojo, but first and foremost, I would like to thank Middle College High School Principal James Esminozza and Link Learning Program Specialist Grace Navarro, who unfortunately cannot be here today, but they are watching live. I wanted to thank them for allowing me to stand here before you representing on behalf of Middle College High School Program. As a senior, these last four years have been a journey and I am so proud to say that through the Middle College Program, I'll be graduating with my AA and I get C of over 60 transferable college credit units to transfer to the University of Robbins, while I'll be continuing my education to become a future school district superintendent. Thank you. These aspirations wouldn't have crossed my mind if it weren't for the leaders, mentors, and counselors that I've encountered through the fully dual enrollment program at San Bernardino Valley College. I am truly grateful and humbled to be a part of such a small, yet very innovative environment where I'm guided and supported to carpe diem, which means to seize the day. I believe that Middle College High School has continued to strive because of the four school-wide learning outcomes, which are college readiness, industry preparedness, social-emotional lifelong learning, and global leaders. These schools have not only built the character of students, but have also molded my leadership outside of the classroom, whether it be at Student Leadership Advisory Council or as the Vice Chair of the Fifth District San Bernardino County, led by Joe Baca Jr., Vice of Youth Advisory Council. I can embrace the present because of the sacrifice and the leadership of those who advocated for my education. So I'm standing here before you as a first-generation student in my family to graduate from college, not just to make my parents proud, not just to prove someone wrong, but to advocate for more full and dual enrollment programs in this school district. Once again, I thank the Middle College High School Program and its partnership with the Valley College for its drive to make a lasting impact on all the students' futures. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. This time, we will go into closed session. Section 6, Action Reported from Closed Session. 6.1, Approval of Elementary School Principals. So moved.
Second.
Be resolved, Board Education approved the appointment of the following employees: Sharon Alvarado, Robert Madrigal, Natalie Morales, Mitzi Moreland, Keed Oliver Rojas, and Juan Ortiz, Elementary School Principals, School Site Effective Date, Work Year and Salary to be Determined, has been moved in a second. Vote, please. Motion passed. All right, Board, you are getting a group of wonderful leaders tonight presented to you. I'll be as brief as possible. I'll start with Mr. Robert Madrigal, a Pacific High School graduate, has been in various positions in our district and has done well, currently Vice Principal at Serrano.
Good evening, Cabinet, Board, and Superintendent. I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve SBCUSD as an elementary school principal. I really want to thank the Board for the tuition reimbursement program that helped pay for my college to get me where I am tonight. Thank you so much.
Sharon Alvarado, another San G High School grad. Worked her way up from a guest educator in a district, coming to our district, leadership positions like program facilitator and current split Vice Principal at Gomez and Davidson Elementary School, Ms. Sharon Alvarado.
Good evening. I had something prepared, but of course, that's going to go out the window right now. But I am so happy to be at one school site, being split as a leader. It has been challenging, but I have learned so, so much from my role there. So I am extremely ecstatic to lead in this district as being a product of this district. And I want to say to my little ones watching at home, there they are, hi, mommy loves you, and thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Dr. Mitzi Moreland, coming to us by way of Rialto Unified School District. Got a chance to see our Superintendent Mauricio Ariano at the Ebony Triangle, talking about equity and the work that we do here for our scholars, and fell in love with what we're doing. That's enough said. I introduce to you Dr. Mitzi Moreland.
Good evening, Board President Danny Tillman, Board Vice President Myra Ceballos, Board Members Mary Ellen Grande, Felicia Alexander, Miki Chahoski, Abigail Rosales Medina, and Dr. Scott Wyatt, and of course, the esteemed Superintendent, Mr. Ariano. I am deeply honored to have the opportunity to serve as an elementary principal. Thank you for entrusting me with this role. I promise to foster an environment where every scholar feels valued, respected, safe, and inspired to learn. Thank you.
Moving on to Mr. Aaron Oliver Rojas. Mr. Aaron Oliver Rojas joined us a few years ago as the Vice Principal at Barton Elementary School, has done an excellent job working to support our most vulnerable population of scholars and supporting our staff. We are excited about his leadership. I introduce to you Mr. Aaron Oliver Rojas.
I can't begin to say how thankful I am to the Board and to Cabinet for investing with me and giving me the training that I need to be able to be successful with my school, hopefully that I'll go to. And again, I'm just so excited, but again, thank you so much and thank you for the opportunity.
And moving right along, we are introducing to you Mr. Juan Ortiz, by way of Redlands Unified School District, returning to the San Bernardino City Unified School District. By way of King, sorry, he messed me up, Arrow View. We are excited to have him back in the district to lead with us, Mr. Juan Ortiz.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank the Board and the Superintendent and their Cabinet for believing in me, believing in me as a leader. I consider myself to be an equity warrior, a person who strives to be culturally proficient every day, and I look forward to the opportunity to serving my community because I'm a hope maker, man. I was here first. Thank you.
And then finally, for elementary principals, joined us, Ms. Natalie Morales in 2005 as a teacher, well-versed in everything English learners and dual immersion, has done great with our SBTA Union and our support staff and teachers. We're looking forward to your leadership. This is Natalie Morales.
Good evening. I just, I'm so incredibly excited to be here today. I just want to thank you for your support, President Tillman, Vice President Ceballos, Superintendent Mauricio Ariano, this wonderful Board and our superintendents. You are, this Cabinet is amazing. I have an entourage behind me of my family and this, when I started, I was a sixth grader and started with, who is now the Superintendent of Fontana. She was my sixth grade teacher who believed in a little Latina girl, then said I was going to be somebody someday. And today, my children get to watch, they get to watch their mommy be the first principal and her, their entire family. And so I'm so excited to be here to let them witness what an amazing organization, one, that this is, and two, get to lead students because I love San Bernardino City Unified School District. I've been here 20 years and it is so exciting to be a part of this. So thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity and I cannot wait, cannot wait to lead our community.
Well, behalf of the entire Board, I want to welcome all the new principals. We're glad that you chose us and we're excited to see the great things you're going to do to benefit all of our students and families. Thank you very much. Item 6.2, Approval of Elementary School Vice Principals. So moved.
Second.
Be resolved. Be resolved, Board Education approved the appointment of the following employees: Jessica Marasco and Ryan Webb, Elementary School Vice Principal, School Site Effective Date, Work Year and Salary to be Determined, Funding 035, has been moved in second. Vote, please. Motion carried. Board, Mrs. Jessica Marasco couldn't join us tonight. She is in her doctoral program, making sure she's pursuing her dreams, so she wasn't able to make it here, but she does have a passion and love for our young people. She'll be incredible at whatever school site she lands. I'm going to introduce to you another Pacific High School graduate, Mr. Ryan Webb. Started in our district as a guest educator and has been a counselor at the middle school level for quite some time, has a passion for MTSS, everything MTSS and equity, Mr. Ryan Webb.
Thank you, Superintendent Ariano, Board members and Cabinet. As you said, I'm a graduate from Pacific. I didn't hear about tuition reimbursement, so I don't know who I need to talk to about that, but I just want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve in this city. I was raised here, still continue to live here and raise my family. I also want to thank my Serrano family, especially my Principal, Ms. Freeman, and the rest of the admin team who prepared me for this role and have been working with me for the last year to make sure I was ready to step into this position. And again, thank you and I look forward to serving our community even further.
Thank you and welcome aboard, Mr. Webb. 6.3, Approval of Middle School Principals, be resolved, Board Education approved the appointment of the following employees: Dana Jamison and Zachary Peters, Middle School Principals, School Site Effective Date, Work Year and Salary to be Determined, Funding 035.
So moved. Second.
It was moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Alexander. Ms. Alexander, vote, please. Motion carried. Dr. Funchess. All right, all things San Bernardino tonight, another graduate of San Bernardino City Unified School District, Cajon High School graduate, Ms. Zachary Peters. Began as a teacher in the district, resource teacher, current Vice Principal, served as a program facilitator as well at Chavez. We are excited about his love for this community and coming back to serve as a leader, Mr. Zachary Peters.
Thank you, Dr. Funchess, thank you. Good evening, everyone, good evening. President Tillman, Vice President Ceballos, Superintendent Ariano, esteemed members of the Board and Cabinet, thank you so much for this opportunity. It means so much to me to come and serve in this community that I've been a part of my whole life. I was reflecting a little bit, sitting in the seats today, and I started thinking, you know what, I've been at a San Bernardino City Unified School District campus ever since I was, I want to say four, I think I started kindergarten at four. So it's been a great journey for me. It means so much to give back to our community. Seeing all the familiar faces tonight was just another reminder of why I'm here and why I want to stay here, really looking forward to all those positive outcomes we're going to have at my school site and collaborating with that team to keep moving the dial forward for these students. Thank you so much and I hope you guys have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Board, we have Mrs. Dana Jamison, another rock star administrator in our school district, been with us since 2002. We are so proud of her and the work that she's done in every position that she's been in and currently has led Muskoy Elementary since 2014 and has done excellent work. This is Dana Jamison.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Tillman, Ms. Ceballos, Mr. Ariano, Board and Cabinet. I will probably be the one up here that will bring tears. I am just grateful for the 12 years that I was at Muskoy. I love the community. I love the people. I'm very excited to move on. This is going to be a new adventure, new school, new learning for me, hoping to grow with the new community, the staff, the students. It's going to be an adventure and I'm excited and a new journey, and so I just want to thank you for all of your support and it's going to be great. We're going to move. So thank you so much.
Thank you. 6.5. 6.4, you're right, thank you. 6.4, Approval of Middle School Vice Principals. Be resolved, Board Education approved the appointment of the following employees: Katina Dorton and Laresha Richardson, Middle School Vice Principal, School Side Effective Date, Work Year and Salary to be Determined, Funding 035.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Medina and second by Ms. Ceballos. Vote, please. All right, Board, Mr. Tillman, I introduce another fabulous SBCUSD educator, all things special education and teacher leader. I had the pleasure of having her in one of my Acts of Courses for Aspiring Administrators. Very astute, very knowledgeable, wants to serve. I introduce to you, Mr. Katina, I'm sorry, Mrs. Katina Dorton.
Good evening, Board President Tillman, Board members, Superintendent Ariano, Cabinet members. I thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. I am very proud to have been a member of the SBCUSD team for 10 years. I'm happy to be moving on. I'm a proud member. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, and another fabulous administrator joining us by way of Paris Union, Paris Unified School District, Dr. Laresha Richardson, well-versed in all things equity, MTSS, supporting our most vulnerable scholars, marginalized scholars, as with Dr. Moreland, has heard about the wonderful work being done in our district by our ETA Department, Mr. Mauricio Ariano. So I introduce to you Dr. Laresha Richardson.
Good evening, Mr. President, Superintendent, members of the Board, Cabinet, and distinguished guests. I am deeply honored to stand before you today. I cannot express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to join San Bernardino City Unified School District. Thank you for entrusting me with the responsibility, sorry, to contribute to the growth and development of our scholars. I am genuinely excited about working alongside such dedicated professionals committed to the highest standard of education and the betterment of our scholars. Together, I am confident that we will continue to do good work and add to the lives of our scholars in our community. Thank you once again for the incredible opportunity and I look forward to the journey together. Thank you.
Thank you. 6.5, Approval of Director Special Education.
Hello.
Be resolved, Board Education approved the appointment of the following
Be resolved, the board of education approved the appointment of the following employee, Ryan Rubio, director, special education, affected date, work year and salary determined, funding 802.
Move.
Okay.
Moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Ms. Caballos. Vote please.
All right, board, I do have, last but not least, I have the pleasure of introducing Dr. Ryan Rubio to you. We all know Dr. Rubio. He's been in the assistant director role since 2021 in special education, has the support of our SBTA partners, CAC partners, our district principals. I introduce to you, Dr. Ryan Rubio.
Good evening, Board President Tillman, Board Vice President Caballos, dynamic board members, Superintendent Ariano and dynamic cabinet. I cannot tell you how honored I am that I can stand here before you representing my family, my wife and kids, I know they're watching, and I have some dynamic administrators in the sped department here supporting me. And I just want to tell you that on behalf of my family, I'm going to give everything I have to support that department, the students and the families, and make sure that they have everything they need to be successful because they do have a voice and they will succeed and our department is going to move our students forward. So I appreciate each of you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you. And if I could just end here, I want to thank our board president, Mr. Tillman, our vice president, my Subalos, our board and our cabinet and Mr. Ariano. I just wanted to say that if you look at our team here that you're bringing on board tonight, our board values diversity, equity, inclusion, strong leadership, collaboration, the human potential that's listed in these operating values. And the leadership team that we have before you tonight represents that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to 6.6, expulsion of students. Is there no list, is not a, Ms. Rodriguez, on 6.6, there's not a list of students there? Okay, so let me entertain a motion, please. Vote please. Moved by Ms. Husky, second by Dr. Wyatt. Motion passed, 6.6, no, 6.7. Permission to expel, rescind, seal, record or modify youth court or expulsion?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Husky, second by Ms. Caballos. Vote please. Motion passed, 6.8, students recommended for suspension or expulsion excluding mandatory offenses, but be mandated to youth court for other means of correction?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Caballos and second by Mr. Husky. Vote please. Motion passed, 6.9, students recommended for suspension but deleted from student asserted discipline due to completion of youth court or due process errors?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Caballos and second by Mr. Husky. Vote please. Motion carried. Section 7, 7.1, reports and comments from student board members. Let me start with Ms. Vascliff.
Good evening, San Bernardino City Unified School District board members, families and participants. It is a pleasure to be here with you all. Thank you to all of you who are here, whether it is online or in person. It brings me joy knowing that the people of our district are passionate to serve the education of the students as well as our future. I would like to discuss a certain situation going on at San Gregonio High School regarding academics. Pre-COVID, San Gregonio High School graduated the most students who took AP classes and passed the exam. Since then, we have gone rid of numerous AP classes such as AP Chemistry, AP Euro, AP Bio, AP Art History. Among that list, now they will remove APUSH and potentially AP Government. This leaves San G with four APs, not including AP Lengor, AP Lit. We claim this is because we don't have enough students' interest in these classes and would like to replace them as Valley classes. I know that us student board members must discuss the positivity of campuses, but it is also our responsibility to report the negative impacts as well. At San G, we have lost academically passionate students because we do not offer the academic rigor they deserve. We say the number of enrollment has gone down, but because we continue to ignore the population of students who strive for academic excellence. As a student who has graduated with a 4.7 GPA, valedictorian, has taken eight AP classes these past four years and has gone and accepted into various high achieving colleges such as U Penn, Georgetown and Harvard, I believe that I would not be in this position without the AP classes. In fact, it would have been a great pleasure taking more APs. My sophomore year, I nearly considered moving to another school because I know I could have succeeded and taken more rigorous courses elsewhere. This is the same problem that many at San G face now, wanting to stay at San G but not being provided with the academic reasons to stay. The current junior and sophomore classes at San G feel anger and frustration of losing these AP classes in favor of college ones. Two students at San Gregonio High School who are in the running for valedictorian agreed that removing AP classes would not only further harm the school and lose students. We hope you take the time to consider the situation and evaluate how we can balance dual enrollment as well as AP classroom. On a more positive note, now that this is my last meeting with the wonderful board, I would like to give a few thank yous to those who made a huge impact in my life. Thank you to my counselor, Mr. Barkley, Dr. Adams, and my teachers, Mr. Stockholm, Ms. Dawson and Mr. Pollitt for giving me the opportunity to shine. I would also like to thank the board for giving me this wonderful opportunity to stand before you all today and speak up for the students. You do not know how impactful this opportunity has been to me and how many doors being a student board member has been. Most importantly, I would like to thank Ms. Mickey. When I first met you, all I saw was energy and that is what I aspire to be, energetic. You have been there for me everywhere I go, in Slack, the summer leads police program and as a student board member. You paved my way to grow as a leader, grow my communication skills, as well as become a better person in general. I hope you know that you are a huge reason why I'm here. I am grateful forever for everything you have done for me. Finally, but the most important ones, my parents. Thank you for leading me throughout my 13 years at the San Gregonio, at the San Bernardino City Unified School District to success, from Ramona Alessandra Elementary to Richardson Prep High and finally San Gregonio High School. This is Silvana Vasquez, class of 2024, signing out.
Thank you very much and Superintendent is working on the AP thing already. Thank you very much. Next would be Ms. Ochoa.
Hello, I would just like to say what a wonderful experience being a student board member has been for me and just overall the wonderful, just wonderful people I've met, but also the opportunities I have gotten. I would like to say that this time of year is very, very emotional. And I would like to say that because I think that it's so wonderful to see so many wonderful, wonderful seniors graduating and wonderful individuals in our school district. And I think that not only have people like Savanna or Daisy or Crystal or Antonio, our senior student board members graduating have been such excellent role models, but I also know that all of the students graduating from Cajon, I want to say, congrats, but also to anyone in the school district, you made it. That's wonderful. And I usually don't get this emotional up here. I'm usually smiling. But I just would like to say that I'm very, very proud of the San Bernardino Unified School District because I know that having been in the San Bernardino Unified School District since first grade and having all my siblings be in this district and just the support that I've felt that I've been able to have and the amazing people that are really here because people in San Bernardino genuinely are not only the richest and kindest in Seoul, but they're all go-getters and they're all wanting to make a difference in their community. And I think that's absolutely wonderful. So with the graduations coming up and everything, I want to say I hope that all of our seniors are extremely decorated because it's super fun to be, I hope your graduation pictures look wonderful and are good enough to show your kids in the future. And not only that, I hope that you like your yearbook picture, your yearbook quote, and that you just take the chance to look around and realize that this is a very bleeding moment, your general education and everything that you get to do at this point in time. So I would like to say thank you to the board members once again for making sure that everyone in the San Bernardino Unified School District has a wonderful experience with their education. And I would like to say that I'm very excited for summer. I'll be being a girl state representative, going to speech and debate nationals as all through opportunities that I've gotten through the San Bernardino Unified School District. And I'm also going to be a camp counselor at INLAN Empire Future Leadership Program, which was another opportunity that I got through the San Bernardino Unified School District. So overall, thank you very much. And these are happy tears, most definitely. I'm so happy to see all my friends leave and just pursue San Bernardino excellence. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chavez?
Good evening, board members and members of the community. I would also like to start off by saying thank you to you board members for making it such a wonderful experience being a board member this year. And I definitely look forward to being here another year and working with you all. I have a couple of announcements and recognitions to share with you all tonight. So SB Trust is having their Power Puff this Thursday at 6:00 PM. Tickets are $3, inviting you all alumni to attend. Also, our graduation is May 31st at 6:00 PM at Valley College. And congrats to you all seniors. I'm very proud of you all for your hard work and I hope you guys have a bright and shiny future ahead of you all. Then yesterday, last night, SB Trust attended the Cajon Film Festival yesterday at the Cajon Legacy Theater. And wait, my bad, I lost my notes, sorry. And it was a success. There was a lot of multiple submissions from my high school and they all got to show their amazing, got to show off their amazing work and I'm very proud of them. Also, our engineering CTE pathway is going to Washington DC to attend the 2024 Sea Perch International Competition next week. I'm very proud of them all to making it that far and I hope it goes well. And then our theater is having their show Addict at the Cajon Legacy Theater this Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM presented by Trip 5334. And then one of our seniors, Mike King Cash, qualified for state finals for shot put for track. And I believe that will be this weekend, so I wish him luck. And then our boys baseball team made it to the semifinals this year since 1925. It's been a very long time. So I'm proud of them for making it that far. And then lastly, my club, SB Trust Students Rechange, is throwing an event this Thursday during lunch to recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month and educate students on the importance of voting. And I would like to say thank you for your time and I hope you guys all have a good evening.
Thank you. Section 8, administrative reports and presentations, 8.1, administrative presentation, subacute update.
Thank you, Board President Tillman. At this time, we would like to show off and showcase our students that we have at the subacute facility that Dr. Ryan Rubio will be presenting and his team. We are very fortunate to have a couple of our teachers that work at the subacute facility. And so we wanted to make sure that when we say all means all, we mean all means all. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to Dr. Rubio and his team.
Hello again, Board President Tillman, Board Vice President Caballos, dynamic board members, Superintendent Ariano and our dynamic and wonderful cabinet. Thank you so much. I am now able to say that I'm the proud director of our special education department. I just want to thank you very much for that opportunity, as was stated. But now, we have a chance here to brag on a program that we support with some of our most challenging needy students in the subacute, the subacute program. So I do have some colleagues that are going to share some words with you at the end of the presentation, but next slide, please. So in this brief presentation, we're just going to give you an overview of the subacute program and then you're going to get to hear from them. So next slide, please. So what is our subacute program? This is a program that's over here off Medical Center Drive. It's at one of the dignity health facilities. And this is a picture of us, our outgoing director, Dr. Lundey, myself, Jackie Willis, our assistant director, and then Ms. Lauren Quarry, and our OT, Elena Espinoza. And so this was one of our many visits to go and see the great work that's happening there. And so if you go to the next slide, please. These are our subacute scholars. These are the students that live there at the facility and they have regular interaction every day with our, not just our staff, but with also the medical staff there. And obviously, looking at that picture, you can tell that the needs are many, the needs are great. But when you have dedicated professionals, educational professionals like we have in our sped department, committed to making sure that they have what they need to be successful, especially when they're not able to verbalize that and respond to that. And so our colleague does have a story that's going to evoke some emotion. So just get ready for that. But yeah, again, this is a facility that houses and supports our students and we go there and provide services to them. Next slide, please. So with our superintendent's and our vision and how he's leading us and leading our district and just allowing everybody to offer input in getting us to this point, the part of inclusive excellence is something that not just resonates with me, with our assistant superintendent, but with the entire sped department. Inclusive excellence means that even our most challenging, our most needy, our most vulnerable students have a voice. They have professional educators that you have hired to support them. And so this is a very near and dear part of equity and as a foundation and really just it defines who we are as sped administrators and sped staff to support our special needs students and now even more so in our subacute. Next slide, please. and now even more so in our subacute next slide please so here's an example of what our students receive daily group activities sensory integration allowing them to since these are not students that just sit and get these are not students that can interact and write and do activities on a whiteboard or on a chalkboard we have to rely on the the means of our professional educator to give them experiences right we know what lesson plans look like we can walk into a classroom and see the level of planning and the level of preparation that our professional educators have done in this case in these students it's not really it doesn't look like that and that's fine right because we understand with inclusive excellence excellence everybody doesn't receive the same but these students receive what they need and what they get and they respond to it as you'll see in a moment virtual field trips art bedside time where there's a lot of reading going on to them and students just being interacted with by not just the medical staff but also with our district staff so that's just a snippet so here are two sample goals from IEPs that are written to support the the level of need the medical need that these students have so using a hand zero level zero prompt hand over hand the student will take place in tactile activities such as holding so so a lot of times these students they don't they're over the the normal day they have a lot of procedures they have a lot of actions that happen to them but in our mentality and the way that we do and support these students they get to interact and they get interacted with in a loving caring manner by not just the medical people but our professionals here so those are just some examples of what the the level of rigor and the level of attempted progress that we're trying to get these students to make next slide so you're going to hear from Ms. Lori Lori Quarry she's our teacher Ms. Lori Shook is here also and Brian Petrasik those are the aides Dave Ports is our special ed point of contact OT as you saw in the picture Elena Espinoza psychologist Dr. Weber school nurse Lynn Massey Judy and Louise are the head nurse in the the subacute social worker so these because that is not our facility this is an opportunity for many people to work together to support our students at this at this facility next slide and so now I'm going to take a moment to turn it over to Ms. Lauren Quarry and and she's going to be able to say a few words and as she comes up this is this is in preparation for this this is what she said working with these students has renewed my passion for teaching these kids go through so much life and death medically that everything else in life doesn't matter at the moment if myself and my team can give one student thirty seconds of normalcy and hope then we have done our job so please take a moment and please welcome Ms. Lauren Quarry
hello everyone thank you and forgive me for saying this I knew this is why it happened I love my job before I took this position I was severe burnout sixteen years of teaching the special ed go do that I mean especially I mean any job but I was severe burnout when I took this position it gave me a new lease on life it renewed hope and like my saying is if I can give thirty seconds to these children that live on life and death they they're on the edge of life and death every day every breath they took they take like actually this morning we lost a student one of our eighth graders died this morning so if I can just my team and I can just give them thirty seconds of normalcy that's all they hear is doctors all they hear is machines all they hear is white noise it's what we call right guys is we hear them that's all they hear it's like it's like when you when you're at home you just hear white noise like you just hear stuff that's all they hear and I and the one story I can think of is that I had a young girl she's still there and I try to bring in a lot of technology to my students because a lot of times you don't know what they're hearing you don't know if they hear you you don't know if they are seeing you don't know what they because they can't a lot of them have non-purposeful movement or non-purposeful facial expressions so you really don't know what they're getting and so I tried to make it to give them something to give that thirty seconds of normalcy I decide I got some headphones and I got an iPad and I put it like I put the first we have to desensitize some of these kids about putting headphones on and we go through all the steps and we did and I put the headphones on this one girl and one student and I put it on like country music and it's like for the first time in three years I worked with her it's like she like it's almost like she was a different person it's like it's like something finally got to her like got through to her she wasn't born this way she was a TBI when she was young little so she's I mean and this is her life now she's she lives on event and she doesn't really what she doesn't talk so we don't know what she's hearing and we don't know if the premises are just bodily functions or what but the minute I put the headphones on and turned it on country music it's like a completely different this might sound weird but like an aura like just completely that changed she changed she smiled she relaxed and she actually started like moving with like 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 almost having purposeful movement with the music almost like dancing in her own way so and if it's and it's that thirty seconds that I was able to give her that she hasn't had in ten years because all she hears is the white noise the machines and there's many other ways like people ask me how do I assess these students well it's like one of my students I have to assess by literally his heartbeat his heart rate like if I touch him with some Play-Doh or a feather and his heart rate goes up well then that means he's feeling something and if his heart rate doesn't move at all and it stays at his baseline then he's not feeling and that's just how I mean that's what we do every day but in the long run I can go on and go on and go on so sorry but in the long run if taking this position has renewed my reasoning why I'm in special ed has given me that second life and even though I only have like nine more years ago maybe before I could retire but other than that if my team and I can just give these students just like that like I said I live on that like thirty seconds of normalcy it might not be the ABCs and the one-two-threes and whatever but at least we're giving them some kind of experience in their education then I think we've done our job that we could so thank you very much everything
and so that again as our teacher you have that level of dedication but just taking it a step further with our paraprofessional please welcome Ms. Lori Shook briefly
cabinet and board member thank you so much for letting me come home twenty-eight years ago I started as a subacute nurse I decided to jump ship and go into special education I'm ending twenty-four years in special education on the thirtieth but I came home thank you for that I came home to subacute children my children thank you for giving me the opportunity to be there to touch them to love them to teach them at their level under the great tutelage of Ms. Lori the support of Dr. Rubio and former Dr. Lundie thank you so much for letting me put in my passion to help these children who have no one they have nobody but us thank you for giving me the honor the privilege of making hope happen with each and every one of these children I'm privileged and honored to be around thank you so much
thank you
next slide please and that's it so thank you everybody if there's any questions or comments
we do have question come but I do want to thank board member Grande for asking for the presentation she's been a real advocate for making things better for the students that you serve there and that's one of the reasons why we asked for the presentation Ms. Medina
yes no definitely thank you so much for the presentation I was I have a few questions one is to find out how many students do we actually work with in the site as well as you know I there's a lot of students there I know but I'm do you work with all students that are there at the site
I have on my caseload well I had fourteen so I mean since the passing of the one this morning so now I have thirteen but there are at the facility I we have two facilities we go to we have the PSA which is the pediatric unit which is like disconnected it's like it's across the street from the main hospital and then we have the NCU units which is the adult units when our students turn twenty-one they get transferred over there and because we still have another year with them we can we go over there and we do services over there at bedside and they were in the small activity room so I have seven students over there and then we have and I have like six students now at the PSA now we are making now we're being known there because one thing I didn't say is that we have students coming in from other facilities that are aging out of the pediatric wards I got TK and because they are they know us we're there now they approached me because we've just got three new students from TK who are twenty-one but they still have that extra year and so they're making sure that they are enrolling them so they can at least get another year of service from what we're doing because a lot of these kids don't have anyone they they are like forgotten children by their families so they don't have I mean a lot of families are out of state we even have families that are out of country and all these kids are wards of the state so that's where they
and I visited this site many many years ago and when also of course maybe about two years into being a school board member and and it is touching because you walk into several of the rooms and some of the students don't have anything no decorations whatsoever nothing and while you go to other students rooms and you see the parents are there in providing at least some you know some decorations or so forth so you can definitely see that so then that's why I wanted to find out how many students we work with at that particular site because there are a lot of students there so I don't I didn't realize how little students you work with compared to the amount of students that are there
we did we had sorry we had I had at first my first started I had nineteen but this past year has been a very hard year we've lost four this past year this past school year so we so four of our students passed away and then and then we but we are having a lot see we have there's like say twenty-five I want to say there's twenty one students twenty-two kids at the PSA that's a pediatric ward a lot of them are babies we have an awful of babies though they are coming up the pipeline so that will be there so when they start three years old or TK I'm making sure that they are getting enrolled into our programs so they can get the process started so we can get some services into them IRC I try to get make sure the parents know about that I try to kind of like I kind of like step outside and let the parents tell the social worker that we have these programs in our district and so did IRC to get these kids going because a lot of these kids come from like from being born like from the womb literally straight to the PSA they're like literally right from being born to these this facility and that's where they live is basically they live they are born there and they die so it's like
so thank you for sharing that I know the thing is that the reason why I'm asking these questions to see you know maybe you need additional support and how can we help help you help our students continue to help our students and then also you know what what does what is the day because you mentioned even thirty seconds so what does a day look like as as yourself you go in in the morning and then what does your day look like working with the students
we go in the morning we start at seven thirty and from like seven thirty until eight well we're ready to receive students at seven thirty the minute we get there we will receive the students if they're nurses or the CNAs or whatever they bring them down we'll receive them into the activity room I created two programs where we do a room to room visit which is a one-on-one it's like going and visiting a loved one and I have a paraprofessional that does that and he will take the well all any of us can do that but he's assigned to that and he will take in the activities into the bedside and some of those are more critically fragile students that cannot leave the room and then I'll even go into the rooms that are which we have to be really careful because we do have a few of our students are in isolation and they so if I if I go in there I have to put all the PPEs on and stuff that whatever and like and because we have three one of the ones that did pass he was in isolation we have three in isolation that they are so fragile that it's almost like they have to live in a bubble because like if I take something into them and god forbid I give them like if I have a cold or a sneeze and I give their immune system is like gone they don't have an immune system anymore so if they receive anything from anyone it could kill them so it's like so it just that every day is different in a way it's like I have a schedule like I said seven thirty we start we prep and then we start prepping and then by eight thirty my assistant Lori Shook and I open up the activity center and we do small group so those are the kids that can come down to the small group and they even bring them down their vents and stuff and then the kids that can't come down my what other aide does the one-on-one room and he'll take the activities to them and then if it's a medical like it's so hard because like I have my schedule and then it all depends on how the students are doing that day in their because medical trumps everything like if if that child is having an issue then you know what school can wait you're not going to learn if you don't feel good you're not going to mean like so yes oh sorry and and then like so from like eight thirty until like twelve we do this room visits and we do small groups and then twelve we do our lunch whatever and then we go back again in the afternoon and we continue to do room visits mainly in the afternoon in both in the main hospital and sorry I've talked up hands the main hospital and at the pediatric ward so
oh yeah thank you so much for sharing that yes definitely
thank you Ms. Chaviz
thank you Ms. Quarry it's good to see you again and thank you for all you do there I it was honored to have Ms. Grande invite us and be able to come a couple of times to your site and it is both heartwarming and heart-wrenching at the same time and my question was similar to Ms. Medina's is what you know we've had some conversations about what we need some of which is out of our control at this point in time but what is you know we really would like to know what we can do to support you not just staff but also materials to you know things like how can we help make the you know or can we with given all the things you know make the room brighter you've got kids who don't have parents bringing you know things so what can we give or bring or do to try to help both make their lives better and your life you know
I'm still learning about what I'm allowed to do because I have to take the hospital the hospital policies and their regulations and stuff state policing regs and then the district and I have to like marry them all together so I have like three entities here that I need to like try to work with and weave together and yeah I mean and the director at the hospital he I mean he tends to like kind of like I mean give me some hard I mean pushback but that's okay though I mean I'm still learning we're guests there so we have to learn and we work with each other how to make the rooms because that's another thing is make the rooms more brighter and stuff that because I have all kinds of ideas that I want to implement and with it renewing my faith in what I'm doing and why I'm in special ed I'm always researching on especially technology because it's like our kids are not going to read and write they're not going to use pencils like I have I Dr. Lundie but I asked her to buy me some VRs virtual reality machine headsets and even though they can't play the games like I'm not gaming with my children but I can take them on virtual realities if you've never done a VR virtual reality where you put the headsets on and you sit in the seat like in the chair you actually I mean I'm telling you because I have one at home my personal one you actually are like in that moment like you're actually flying over the ocean and it actually sounds and feels like you're doing it and even though our kids can't hear or see we don't know what they're hearing or seeing they might hear and they might see doing stuff like that that's what I try I'm trying to research because there's technology out there that has to I mean our kids with advancement in technology advancement I mean is out there so I'm always researching trying to trying to just find things I can help then when I do then that's when I go to my like my POC or my director whatever and tell him hey you know what I found this is it possible or whatever and just and with the rooms it's hard to know what I have to do is I I'm starting some programs with the students is one is a reading buddies where I like to bring people in Is one is a reading buddies, where I like to bring people in from the community. Because I want the community, because the community don't know that they're there. And read to my students. Even if you just sit next to their bed for five minutes and read to them. That's more interaction that they've had with a human being than they have than being poked, poked and prodded and stuck and, and tubes and everything else.
No, no, I don't mean to cut you off, but.
So I'm sorry, yes.
Just don't forget about the ask, because I think they're really asking. You don't have to give us tonight. But if you could think of ways that we can do more, uh, and especially for the students that don't have parents to support them, I think I hear the board saying, get us a list of that.
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't even know until Ms. Grande about Subacute. I knew Anderson, I knew, I thought all our kids were at Anderson, Carmack or Harmon. And so I really appreciated her bringing it forward. But now, you know, now that they're on our radar, I, I hate to say it like that, but you know, um, you know, I want to make sure that even they, that all of our students, like, it's so important that all of our students, you know, are able to, to succeed to the level that they're able to succeed and that we are providing that support. So that's what I'm asking for, Mr. Tillman, is I'm asking that we are able to provide the education that they deserve.
And we will, we, as we look to strengthen, uh, the support for this program, we definitely put together a, um, maybe a wish list or a needs list. And we will take care of that in the sped department. But then also reach out if there's something that we know that our board can help with. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Grande?
Uh, thank you. I've been waiting for months now for this issue to come up, as we all know. Uh, I've actually researched it, it's at great lengths. I've spoken to Tony Thurman three times and he knows that the problem is here in California and all across the nation. There is no set way or set rules for these children when it comes. It's scattered at best. Uh, I have, uh, downloaded quite a bit of research on this actual subject, which I have given, um, several articles to Karen to give you all a packet of it all, to give you some background information. And, uh, and while the, the problem is nationwide, it's not a new one, how these children are marginalized and don't have a lot of things that other children do. Uh, there are some things we can do. Um, one of the things that we could do is, uh, collaborate at a greater length with the hospital to give facilities a little bit a better boost. If you were to see the layout of the unit, you would see how they have like a large portion of the Subacute is, is unused, which would make a wonderful area for teachers and students that would be theirs. And it would be a, a didactic that is like a school environment alongside a clinical environment. And that's not what you have right now at our Subacute. It's all one-hundred percent clinical with the smells and sounds and everything. And, uh, you see a small room where they live and they die there. Um, so I was there for a year. So I have made that my, uh, purpose. But, um, I do, like I said, I have research that is all over the world on this issue. And it's called a school hospital. What we want is a school hospital. That means where it's equally education and clinical are equally important. And, and that, like, right now, just right this moment, um, this is how marginalized, for whatever reason, this, this unit has been. We've been working, living, or going there with our children and everything without a contract. It's been, um, it's so outdated, it expired several years ago, Karen, I think. Um, uh, six years ago or something like that. Uh, and I know Mr. Argano said that they, he was looking at that with, I think, Terry to see. But it's, it's hard to come to an MOU if we haven't ever met with the hospital people to say, you know, uh, our teachers need a space there for school stuff. And our teachers don't have a space there. So one of the things our children could get there is a better deal for their teachers. Uh, they don't have an office space or a workspace there. They don't have a, a storage space. So even if we have, uh, equipment and, and, um, things that we can buy, there's nowhere to put it. And then we do, we, they were, we were given a very small closet, but we weren't allowed to lock it because they had to have a lock to, you know, the lock to everything. So our toys and stuff, they could be taken out and played with by any of the other visitors. So there was a lot of issues that are both on a grand scale. But just to help this one little unit, uh, the most immediate thing is to talk to the hospital and tell them our concerns and why we feel that we, we should have more. And then, you know, at least put it out there. Uh, when I spoke to Judy, the head nurse, she said, well, what is it you want, Mary Ellen? And I, and I said, well, I'd like to have a meeting, you know, with, and Dignity helped, uh, merged with Common Spirit, who, Common Spirit is now nationwide, worldwide, actually. And then she said, I could get you that meeting, but you have to have an ask. And that's what I've been waiting for all this time, all these many months. I've been patient and I have, because I need help. What ask could it be? And in order to do that, I'd like you to know everything that I've read. So if I have permission to send you all of my research, I would be happy to do that as a start. Uh, in the meantime, I know my friend, um, Lori and Lori, and then Dr. Rubio, I will meet with you in length and show you everything that I have discovered. And then we'll go from there.
I would just encourage you to, um, think about the ask and present it to the board members. I know it's going to be a challenge because, uh, California has a lot of resources, but they're also big on regulation.
Oh, it's there, it's, it's there.
And now you're talking about three different organizations, laws that you have to navigate.
You have to read the, the research I've found. It talks about all of that.
I know, because I, I know anytime you deal with different agencies, I've been in government my whole life. That's what the challenge is going to be. And, um, it's going to be, I mean, whatever we want to do extra, that's going to be the challenge. But, but I'm, I'm just, want to just advise you, Ms. Grande, that the sooner you put your ask out there, the sooner it will take. Because whatever we do is going to take a long time anyway.
I know that, I know.
So you want to wait for, uh, Scott to read everything? I'm just playing, Scott.
You could, you could read it in a couple of nights. It's not there.
Just give us the ask.
Yeah.
Don't make it dependent on me reading it. Just tell me what you want. Uh, you're the expert. You've been doing this your whole life. You take it for granted, but you know this area, you visit it, you have a passion for it. Tell us what you want, you champion, you lead it, and we'll support you. But we don't have to read the volumes and volumes of stuff that you read.
Right.
To, to, to understand what you're going to ask us.
Well, I do know what the, the, the big ask is, I want a, uh, a children's, uh, children's hospital for, uh, children and youth with chronic and long-term disabilities. CLT, chronic and long-term disabilities, children and youth.
One exists anywhere in the United States?
Yes, it's, uh, in the United States, it's in Cincinnati. It's called the Lucille Packard Cincinnati Children's.
So one does not exist in California?
No, there's, there's not one. The closest is Totally For Kids, just right here in Redlands, which, um, Doc, uh, Dr., uh, Mr. Argano was very familiar with. And I think Scott is too. And that is the closest thing to it.
Is that the model you like?
I haven't seen the one for Totally For Kids. No.
All right, so, I, I, I'm not being negative, I'm just saying that.
And there's one in Orange County too, thank you.
So it'd be, it'd be better if you found a site in California. And the difference is, that's because they've met all the California regulations.
Yes.
And that means it's something that we could do.
With your permission, with the board's permission, I would like to take that further and find it and go and look at it in Orange County. But I couldn't go until this was in the agenda.
You can, you can look.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Abayos?
I just want to say thank you for coming out. And, um, you know, I think it's really important that we do become aware of all of our student population, you know, from young to old, from, you know, wide, the whole spectrum. And so I myself wasn't aware. I visited the facility not that long ago, thanks to Mary Ellen. And so thank you for bringing it. And I know this is a passion that you have. Um, I will, you know, kind of reiterate what Ms. Chusky has said. However we can support, I think that the will of the board is there to be able to support. We just want to know how and what it is that you need. Um, in terms of, you know, what you're seeking for, Mary Ellen, maybe, maybe creating some sort of subcommittee. You know, kind of a task force of some kind, you know, where, where we have dedicated people, maybe within special education or whoever, that, that are going to dedicate some time to maybe do some of that research. And it's not all tasked on you. I'd be willing to support something like that. Um, and I just, I just want to, the, 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 the type of environment that I, when I got elected on the board, that I, that, that I wanted to bring. And I think I have successfully done that in my own unique way, is, um, just that. You know, kindness, inclusivity, you know, spreading love, making sure that we're all working, you know, in a, in a, in a similar direction, you know, with the superintendent joining and creating our shines, um, uh, vision and mission. When I visited this facility, one of the things, one of the quotes that came to mind immediately, um, was, was this, this quote. "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable, vulnerable members." And I truly believe that. I mean, we need to be able to stand behind, you know, students like these, right? That, that can't advocate for themselves. That if you don't bring before us, we, we wouldn't be able to know exist. And so I just want to make sure that I share that because we, this is the level of dedication that I, that I think that we're striving for, at least for me personally. And so, Mary Ellen, however I can support your efforts, you know, I, I definitely want to be able to do that.
Thank you. I, I, uh, everyone I've spoken, when I say everyone, I have.
Hold on, hold on a second, um, um. Grande, I'm on, you can put your light back on, but I'm on. Next speaker is Ms. Medina.
So what I was going to add is that, um, and I'm so glad that you are pushing it. I was kind of hesitant because I know that, um, it's not a necessarily welcoming area. And when you go in, at least many, when I went there many years ago, it wasn't a welcoming area. And I know Dr. David Van Stralian, and maybe you can look into, um, his idea was for me. Abigail, we need to, we need to get them virtual glasses where even with slight movements of the eyes, I mean, they can strive, try to learn in some different ways. And as, as was mentioned by the teacher, sounds, music, anything. And I think that even with, with purchasing technology, providing those opportunities. And like I said, he was been pushing this many years ago. And unfortunately, the district, we never, you know, as much as I tried pushing it then, it, it just fell through the site. And so I think, just looking into that, I mean, looking at, there's different technologies out there, as was mentioned, that students can benefit. Um, of course, we want to look at the, the environment, the student learning environment, and making it more welcoming. Because like I said, when I went there, it was not welcoming at all. And, and it was frustrating because you could see these students were suffering. And so, um, you know, so whatever I, you know, I think the, the board is willing to purchase and give us a list of things that we need to do now, so that way students can start working on it and then looking at facilities and how we can improve that, um, learning environment as well.
Mrs. Alexander?
Dr. Rubio, congratulations. Um, I just had a couple of questions. I, along with the board, I support whatever resources that you need, um, to support the Subacute facility. Uh, I just had a question regarding just, um, the interaction that, um, maybe our scholars have had or supportive, you know? I know we have best buddies on campus, but is there any type of interaction that our scholars that are at schools that have best buddies, maybe they can come into the Subacute facility and maybe utilize like the inspiration in terms of the technology or resources that they can provide?
Uh, the response that I have is due to the, the significant medical nature, uh, fragility that they have. Um, but definitely something with all the comments from our board members, um, we're definitely going to continue to explore options, looking at this, this, uh, facility in Cincinnati. We'll see what type of technology they have. So we, this has been great homework that we will research for that. But any response to that piece?
Actually, I am starting to create programs like that. I started, one of my, I was being observed, my, uh, evaluation this year. So one of my goals was to, was, I'm creating a goal to bring in the community. But I started with the district community because they're already vetted. Because I have to be very, because of these kids, so. And because they're already vetted, that's where I started, uh, reading buddies. So basically coming in, volunteering, like, if any of you would like to spend ten minutes, come in and read to one of my students. Don't expect any reply, but just read to them. That, so that's, and then I'd like to expand that to like other students too, like, an RSP class that needs to practice in reading. Well, you know what? My students are not going to know what level they're reading at. So it's going to give the students our reading encouragement, plus my students get interaction with other peers. And then I have other programs I already have planned for the future, like music program. I like bringing muse, people that play instruments. And I have a lot of programs I would like to bring in the community, bring in the district to, with these students, to get them, uh, not out in the community, because they, they can't go out, but to bring the community into them, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. How many years, um, has the Subacute been servicing the students there? How long has the, that facility on Medical Center been there?
At least, well, at least fifteen years, if not more.
I think it's more, yeah. Because I remember the early two thousands, they used to have, my uncle was a stroke patient. And they used to have, uh, rehab there for adults too. Because he was, he was there for a couple of years. So I would go there and I remember seeing the young folks there, the time their parents would come and visit them on the weekend.
Yes.
So I know it's been there for some time. But I think they eliminated the rehab part for the adults, right?
Yes.
Right.
Well, they're planning on reopening the front part, the PS, the pediatric for adults. So they're going to have the back half for the pediatrics and the front half for ages twenty-one to thirty-five. So, because, uh, and then they're going, they'll have all different levels of, like, patients there. Because, because we have different levels. We have kids at our own vents and then we have kids that can actually go out to school and stuff, so. So they'll have different levels.
Um, Ms. Grande, then I'm going to end it on that. Ms. Grande?
Okay, so right now I'm going to propose that I, uh, take all my stuff and Dr. Rubio and I sit down, have a nice chat, okay? So we'll stop.
I do.
All right?
I look forward to it.
Mr. Argano?
Thank you, President Tillman. I, I do want to echo, uh, a big thanks to, uh, Board Member Grande for, uh, bringing light, uh, to the needs of this program. I had the opportunity to visit about a month ago. And I can tell you firsthand that, uh, Ms. Corey and Ms. Shook just do amazing, amazing, good-hearted work there. And I appreciate, uh, your intentions, your spirit and your good-heartedness. I think it's in, important for us to emphasize and recognize, uh, it is important to have dreams and we're going to work on those dreams. But the reality is, um, unfortunately, we don't own the building. And, um, and we are guests. And these two ladies are great ambassadors of our district and they have forged good relationships, uh, with the hospital. But when you're dealing with hospital, you also have to think about, um, liability. And, uh, we have to be very careful. And I know that the, the hospital has to be very careful. So as we dream big, um, their first filter is, um, liability, insurance, uh, what could happen? And so, uh, I had asked Ms. Grande or suggested it, I think, before we start getting into committee work, I think the first thing we need to do is perhaps now that Dr. Rubio is on board, we need to forge that relationship with the executive director of the, um, of, of Dignity Hospital, or whatever the new name is. And then I suggested that they get an opportunity to go visit the, um, Totally Kids facility that was in the Redlands Unified School District. So I had an opportunity over the last six years to, to see that facility. They're a privately owned facility, uh, but it's kind of the same setup where the district comes in, provides support. Now, that private vendor has made the space, uh, uh, for the educational program to come in because they had the space. Um, this area, they do have some areas that we could move into. But again, we don't know what their plans are, uh, for that use. And they have to be ready to accept, because I think as Ms., uh, Ms. Corey said, you never know what the number of students that are going to come in, um, are going to be. So they need to have space because one year you might get fifteen new kids come in and the next year you have two kids come in. So even though they have what's perceived as open space, it, it could be space that they could need because there aren't many facilities of this nature, right? So I would just suggest that, uh, let's dream big, but let's start with forging a relationship and have that communication with our new director, with the executive director, and then make our intentions made and see if somehow maybe we can find a joint collaborative effort where, where we can paint, we'll paint for them. Where we can knock down a wall, if they allow us, we'll add a wall. But let's start there, but, uh.
I'm, I'm assuming that these students aren't assigned there based on school district or area. How do they get, uh, placed there? Uh, is it, is it by, uh, Southern California or county or?
Basically what it is, is when a child needs to be in a Basically what it is, is when a child needs to be in a subacute unit, it's just like an adult, wherever there's an opening, a lot of these parent, a lot of these students are Medi-Cal, and so it's wherever the parents can find an opening. If you live down San Diego and you have a student like this, a child like this, and there's an opening up in Reading, well, you know what? That's the first bed you take, you take it. Uh, like I said, we have a lot of parents that live outside of San Bernardino. They live, I have a few down in Orange County, I have a few in the high desert, I actually have a few out in different states, and I, I mean, and those kids are wards of the state because the parents gave them over to the state, because, I mean, and then, uh, I have a few out of country. So, but it's just like, it just, wherever there's a bed for these students is basically where they can put them at.
But once they get there, then the district gets a level of funding? Uh, Terry, does the district get funding for those students?
I would have to double check that, sir.
Be good to know.
Yes, sir.
I, I do want to make one more comment, again, and it's a complimentary comment to our, our two wonderful staff members. I'm starting to sound like Mr. Tillman, but money is not an issue, so I want the board to know that. So whatever equipment, whether it's the VR, the AR, whatever we need, uh, it's not a money issue. So we just need that list, um, and we can get it to you as long as the hospital approves that what we're bringing in is something that's, uh, safe and-
I'm just learning, I'm still learning, even though this is like my third year there, of what I can do and what the director of the hospital will allow me to do, because I have to go through him first, uh, because, I mean, like I said, we're guests, so I have approve, he has to approve what I do. And then I, that's when I make my list, like, okay, I can use this, I can use this, and this, we can do this, then, so we're still kind of like in, it's like in the infancy stage, we're still learning what we can do at this facility and with these students, so.
Thank you very much. Great presentation, appreciate you. Section nine, Board Discussion, 9.1, the Swan's 64th Annual Debutante Ball. And I ask this to be agendized, the, uh, Swan's Debutante Ball has been in the San Bernardino area, it says, for 64 years, and I've known of countless young, countless young ladies who've gone through the program of San Bernardino and get great scholarships, some action for a $3,000 sponsorship.
Who moved?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved to second, vote please.
I'm sorry, I didn't get who moved it and who seconded.
It was moved by Mrs. Alexander and seconded by Ms. Medina. Was it? Oh, moved by Ms. Medina, and seconded by Ms. Alexander. Motion passed, section 10. Action items. First, no report. As presented. Again, moved by Ms. Husky, seconded by Dr. Wyatt, vote please. Motion passed, 10.2, adoption of resolution regarding delegation of authority for contract approval. Who moved? Moved by Dr. Wyatt and seconded by Mr. Husky, vote please. Motion passed, 10.3, approval of education protection account spending plan fiscal year 2024-2025. Who moved?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Wyatt, seconded by Ms. Alexander, vote please. The motion carried. Section 11, consent items, 11.1, approval of consent list.
Second.
Moved, moved by Ms. Husky, seconded by-
Seconding.
Ms. Alexander moved, who seconded? Mr. Husky? All right, moved by Ms. Alexander, seconded by Mr. Husky, vote please. Wait, hold on, hold on, any to pull?
Mr. President, I'll be pulling 11.19, it is a paid contract for county schools, and I am a county employee.
Any other? Full 11.19, vote please. Motion carried, 11.19, renewal agreement with San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools for $38,500.
Okay.
Moves and second, moved by Mr. Husky, seconded by Ms. Sabios, vote please. Motion carried, section 12, reports, comments by union organization. We already heard from Ms., uh, Bettis Icolla, but she might want to talk again. Anybody? Is it anybody from the teachers association?
No comment.
Uh, California School Employees Association?
No comment.
Communication Workers of America?
No comment.
San Bernardino School Police Officers Association?
No comment.
Just want to tell the boys, we want them to start talking and take them off of this list, and, uh, they'll start coming back again. Section 13, uh, 13.1, comments by board members. Ms. Medina.
Yeah, no, first of all, I want to say congratulations to all our graduates. Um, you know, this is, uh, definitely one of those highlighting moments where we're seeing the fruit of our labor when it comes to our education system here in the district. So I'm really proud of all of our students and their future that beholds after graduation. Um, I wanted to ask, uh, maybe with regards to, maybe we can get an update on, uh, the Virtual Academy and what they're, um, what they're doing and what they're moving forward with. I think I, I spoke with a parent who they're planning to make some changes, at least that's what the conversations were, so if I can have, it, it could be either through the board update, or, um, even here, for those that want to listen, to find out what the Virtual Academy is doing. Um, I know there, some, like I mentioned, some of the parents, you know, uh, were concerned about the direction they possibly may be, may, I'm sorry, may be moving into, so, um, I just want to clarify and see what's going on before, beforehand. And then I also spoke with a parent at, um, Cajon High School with regards to the Ballet Flor Clorico, and apparently many students who, um, have to purchase their own outfits and costumes and, not costumes, their, their dance, um, outfits. And so I'm wondering, this kind of sparked an idea with regards to other after-school programs, such as like maybe the mariachi or, or some other groups.
To, uh-
So, uh, we're, we're paying, covering that.
I've called on that one a few times.
Okay, so then, just making sure, so if a parent that might be listening, if they have any, who do we direct them to then?
Mr. Ariano.
Mr. Ariano, okay, okay. Yeah, because some of the students were, um, the parents were, they couldn't afford a lot of the, the outfits that they needed to get for their students. They did? Okay. Yeah, we did, um, it is classified as an after-school club where they take, um, attendance, and so because it is that way, we are able to fund, uh, the uniforms. A way I can know how to respond as well. You did, okay, okay. All right, great. And, um, I just want to say how proud I am also as well for our district, because the fact that we're seeing, not only are we growing our own within the school district and, and building future leaders, but also the fact that other school districts, and I do want to, um, um, recognize Dr. Funches for, you know, moving our district in a way that while other districts are dismantling, and it's unfortunate to see here in California, that they're dismantling their, their diversity, equity, and inclusion departments, uh, we, we are thriving in our school district. And so, um, hearing other, other individuals that are coming from those school districts, and they're excellent, and they're, they're the top notches, and, and the fact, I'm really excited, the fact that we're going to be able to have, uh, you know, a, a nice pool of professional and highly qualified candidates that will come to our, the school district, knowing the fact that we are inclusive and that we support these programs. So, um, for those that are listening and, and you're interested in applying, you know, please look at our website, and we're, we're hiring highly qualified, um, individuals, and if you want to move to our city, I mean, great things are going to come from this. So I want to say again, Dr. Funches, thank you so much.
Ms. Medina, Ms. Alexander.
Eric, good evening. Um, I would also like to say congratulations to all our graduates. Um, it's an exciting time. We had our first graduation yesterday at, um, Sierra High School and have more to come, so looking forward to that, great job, graduates. And I'm so proud of our student leaders, I mean, what a great program. And, uh, it's just the way they presented themselves and the passion that they exhibited is just excellent, and just the pride that they have regarding San Bernardino, you know, I think we all shared the fact that we don't like it when people say, "Oh, well, you live in San Bernardino," and it's like, like a negative. And neither, none of those students expressed anything negative, it was all excitement and passion. So that's the testimony that is working in terms of what you, what you say as leaders, it resonates with our youth and our scholars. So we need to continue to just uplift our city, uplift our school district, and to continue to shine, so excellent work.
Thank you.
I'm not done.
Oh.
But thank you. Um, I wanted to commend Dr. Funches, because, you know, last week at the retirement event, or SBC USD event that we had, um, honoring, uh, employees that had many years, and, you know, there was two with 50 years, but the number of employees that have retired, and also with the Monte event, um, by SBTA, obviously, you know, what work your department is doing is a testimony, because there were a lot of hires today in leadership roles, and I don't know if it equates to the number of people that retired, if they were principals and vice principals, but the very fact that we are growing our base and making sure we have a, I guess, a succession plan of some sort is excellent, so thank you. Um, I would also wanted to highlight, I was participating in Lincolnshire, I think some of us did for Career Day, and this is just an idea I have. And I'm not sure if there's been any thought about this, uh, regarding our pathway programs, uh, within those different schools, to make sure that the career path or the people that we ask to come speak reflect that particular link learning program that might be on site, or if there's a partnership with an elementary school and a middle school and a high school, somehow we're attracting those employees or those career paths to reflect what we're teaching on campus. So it's something that I think we should think about, um, because it's just, it reflects that we are really staying in alignment with the idea of a purposeful pathways program. So something I just want to put out there for you, Mrs. Applegate. And lastly, I want to thank, um, the district for the support for the head dress ball. Um, we had a successful 62nd Annual Head Dress Ball, Dr. Rodriguez was one of our models. Um, Dr. Well, um, our superintendent, Ariano, and Dr. Funches were, um, welcomed the guests along with myself, and I was really appreciative of your time and your energy and your effort. And it was an exciting event. Um, we were able to celebrate generations, so the 20th and 21st century of music, and, um, it was just a way to bring in the community. I was thankful for even our dignitaries over there, my husband was our auctioneer, and, um, Mayor Helen Tran also came as well. And, um, just the very fact that we had, uh, this community there, SBTA came out to support, it was great. I was very appreciative, and we have several members that are, um, sit on dais, but also in the community, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Grande. Yep. You don't have to come.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to talk. Well, I'm just really proud of us too, and, and I tell you, I was, uh, at Ecclesia Church last Sunday, and I just liked, my heart was to burst. I was so, I was so happy when Mauricio, when he starts talking about his shine, and he gets so excited, and, and, and he, he just like wringing brother Brown, and, you know, he just like explodes with it, and people were just listening to his every word. And then he did a little thing at the end I hadn't heard him say before. He did all the thing about the shine, and in the end he says, "The last thing I want to leave you with is love." He said, "Love." He says, "We're all about love in San Bernardino." And it was like, it was just so fitting, and everybody was looking at him, we looked at each other, he's, "It's about love, because we feel that," you know? And I just like, anyway, thank you. I mean, I'm sure you hear it all the time, but thank you, you, I don't get tired of you saying it, somehow you change it a little bit every time, you know? So I don't get bored. And, um, anyway, told her shine story again, and I've been to ICEC a few times now, and I ju, I just love that place, I do. I, I, they're my peeps, and I used to dream about those things happening in our city for, for our parents, and, and my thing was always, single parents, we have to, you know, hone in on those little children that have children, because I used to be one. And I, I still feel it when I go in there, I still feel that old ghost of me, you know? So, uh, it's jeered, it's jeered in my heart. Um, I, um, I, I love all the graduations, I, I've never been so tired and happy before. I mean, I, you know, I go to two events a day, and even three the other day, I don't know how I did it, but I did it, but, uh, but in between there, I do see my family, and they're very supportive, and they know that, uh, it's almost ending and we're going to go back to normal, but, uh, that, and so I'm, I'm real thankful for that. Uh, I just went to the, uh, Renaissance of the Multi-Literacy Fair at Cal State San Bernardino, it was run by the, um, the Latino Faculty and Staff Event, and I've done that for a few years, and I was able to go and, and do my puppet show and, uh, and dance around, I had three of them, and I took, I took all of the, the children, some of these that I buy from the internet, and I was teaching them how to talk about moving their lips like this, and so it was really cute. So if you want to take one of these home, I'll have one for you, you can play, you can practice. And then of course, last but not certainly not least, I have this huge sigh of relief that we finally brought this up, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, you know, it's been really, really hard for me not to, you know, go all over the place and say it all over, because I knew, I know the ask is what I want, but I had to wait and be patient and trust the universe, and to, tonight with Dr. Rubio just coming in, and, and he's going to be able to help me do this and, and find out, and, and we have to figure out what the ask is, and of course, the ask is with the hospital, to see if they're willing or able to be able to do anything in that area for help. So that would be the start. So I'm looking forward to working along with him, giving him all my ideas, and he can use his expertise, and then Dr. Anna over there, Applegate too, her kindness and love for, for students, and, and I just feel very, very supported right now, so I want to thank you all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sabios.
Thank you so much. I'll try to be brief. Again, I just want to say, um, Happy Classified School Employee Week, um, and LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Um, I also want to just say, you know, just thank you to the, to the, um, parent engagement. Um, they held a wonderful event, uh, Parent Volunteer Celebration. Um, this was my second year in a row attending, and it's just really nice to go back and, and, you know, see, it was tremendous, the growth that they did. I think they did something like, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Rodriguez, but they went from like a low number to the 600, what was the initial number? It was something low. They started with like, no, not even, I think it was- It was something low. They started with like, no, not even, I think it was less than 100. Parent volunteers, and this year they were up to 600 plus volunteers. And so I just thought that was like extraordinary. So, you know, great job to, you know, family engagement, the whole team over there. And of course, our amazing director, Beatrice. Also, congratulate, take the opportunity to congratulate all the graduates. Everybody that's going to be graduating this year and to their families. You know, so, so proud of every single one of them. And also attended the Headdress Ball for the first time. That was really, really nice for me to watch. And they told me it's a very nice and formal event, so come all dressed out. And I did, some long gloves. I played the role. I played the part. It was really nice. I was really glad that I was able to go and experience that. And I was able to see Dr. Rodriguez too onstage, you know, doing her thing. So that was nice. And then I look forward to, you know, Middle College and Royal Valley graduation, which are the ones that I will be attending because they're later in the evening. So those times work better for me. And then also just, I want to say a huge, huge, huge thank you to Principal Hector Murietta from Sierra High School as well as Ms. Reels from Arrow View. I was actually invited to a graduation over at Middle, not Middle College, I'm sorry, San Bernardino Valley College. Their Pharmacy Tech graduation, which actually one of our students was participating in that graduation. And she was the only one in our district who was, she's going to be graduating this year from Cajon Montserrat. If you're out there watching, congratulations again. She's going to be graduating from our school district. And she started the pathway, the pharmacy pathway with Valley. And she'll be continuing with them in that program and hopefully transfer to Loma Linda because they have a partner, Loma Linda has a partnership with Valley College, which I'm actually looking forward to bringing in Dr. Davis, hopefully next board meeting so that you guys can hear about the program and the partnership and everything. Because I'm telling you, this is an area where there's a lot of employment opportunity that's not tapped into. And so anyway, that day I went to that graduation. And so I had already taken the day off from work. And I was like, man, it's early, so I want to visit some schools. And I showed up unannounced to both Sierra and Arrow View. And just the way that I was received, I was so, so impressed. It just felt so good and so at home. And I was a little nervous because I was like, oh, my gosh, you know? People don't like it when you show up and, you know, for good reasons. Sometimes they're busy, they're doing things and you catch them off guard. But I was just so very impressed at just the level of hospitality that they offered and, you know, received me and shared me their school site. And I finally got to see Sierra's, you know, programs that they have over there. Well, thank you Wellness Center. It is absolutely amazing what they're doing over there. I was so, so impressed. And so anyway, I can't say enough about those two schools. And I later went back to Arrow View. They invited me to come back for their end-of-year ELAC celebration. And they have so many parents, the parent engagement over there is awesome. I got to see also their after-school Folclorico practice going on the day that I visited. And so again, I just can't say enough, thank you for receiving me, for, you know, just accepting me, for not giving me a fuchi face, for coming unannounced. It really, really did mean a lot to me. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Abios. And Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. And some of my colleagues have talked a lot about some of the amazing events that many of us were all at. And, you know, it was really nice to see all seven of us at the staff recognition celebration. And, you know, I think that says a lot when we have that type of coherence as a board. Myself and Mr. Ariano were talking a little bit about it earlier over on our break and how we're working really well together and we're meshing really well together. And that the community sees that, you know? And that just doesn't happen overnight and it doesn't always happen with the board either. So I want to compliment all of us on our efforts because it takes, I don't hear that term village, but it takes a team to get it done. And I think we have a heck of a team in place right now. So thank you, Mr. Ariano for being our leader and to my colleagues as well. That was a great event. And as you said, Ms. Alexander, two folks with 50 years of service. Like, that is absolutely amazing. And I couldn't believe I made 40, you know? And then tons with 30. So just, they add to testament as well for our district and what we do here. Because when you look at employee recruitment and then also more importantly, employee retention, it's huge. And if people are staying here that long, that means that they feel at home and they love what they do. So I thought that was a great event. MONI Awards, you heard a little bit about that. That's always a lot of fun, seeing all the retirees get together. And then, all right, let me remember how many years added up to, did we get that one? Over 500 years? That were just there, right? Not the ones that weren't there. So again, a great event. Myself and Ms. Chusky got to go to the end-of-year Student Board Member Banquet Celebration. That was a really a lot of fun, getting to meet their families. And then they had a little bit of a mock school board meeting up here. Boy, they took off with that thing. That was kind of hilarious, actually. They've been really well behaved, but when they were running that board meeting, they were a little bit loose. So, but it was fun to watch. They were so giddy and excited up here. So that was a treat. I got to be the keynote speaker at Royal Valley, the JROTC Award Ceremony. That was a blast. You know, Major Williams had invited me and I said, sure, every chance I can get to see our kids in uniform. They look sharp. We'd say squared away is what we call that. They looked squared away. And Ms. Abios' little sister was there. I didn't know it was her little sister. Must take about 1,000 pictures. And I said, hey. Yeah, so she was actually former battalion commander, which, two years in a row, which is huge to be able to lead that group. So another leader in the family in the making. State Delegate Assembly, I didn't get to go to the Headdress Ball, sorry, Dr. Rodriguez. But you guys were outstanding in regards to me, fantastic host to my proxy, which was my wife and her friend. So thank you for that. I did want to come back home again like I did last time to get to see it. But Ms. Chusky said if I come back home this time, she's not going to ever want to go up there with me and disown me. So I had to stay with her. But a lot of great things happened up at State Delegate Assembly. We were working on a lot of fair funding on Prop 98 because there are some threats against Prop 98, if you don't know that right now. And so we're working to make sure that the governor stays to his word as well as the Constitution, our state constitution, that we get fully funded on Prop 98. And there were some other things we were working on. I'll let Ms. Chusky talk about that. As she said, really was fun to get to talk about our students. People talk to us about our students. And we're looking forward to that. They got the AEC this year coming up. And then I had mentioned to Mr. Ariano as well as President Tillman about having entertainment. And they were asking for student entertainment. So we already know the San Bernardino Team Music Workshop brings it every time. So I think that's a lock if we invite them to go and we'll be able to see them perform this coming year. And I also want to thank Mr. Komnik and his team for providing all the information that you did for us to talk about Prop 98 and fair funding. You made us look like rock stars. I want you to know that. So we wanted to make sure we represent San Bernardino City at the highest level. And I think we did a really good job about that. And then as we already heard it, Sierra High School graduation. Wow, what a great ceremony. Ms. Alexander was our keynote speaker for the boards. You know, so thank you, Ms. Alexander, for doing that. And what a great celebration. Kids were excited, staff were excited, families were excited. And it's that time of year right now that I really enjoy. I am not going to lie, I'm tired as heck, but we still got a couple more weeks to go. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. And Ms. Chusky?
Oh, yes. So thank you all. I want to echo, it's been, I know we've got a couple more board meetings, but it still, it kind of feels like the end of the year because school's out next week. So my teacher mindset, I'm like, this is the end of the year. So I just want to thank you guys for a great year. It's been wonderful working with you all. I feel like we've accomplished quite a bit and I look forward to what's next. End of the year always means it's crazy. So I also attended the volunteer tea celebration. It was, I think the best part for me was just the excitement of the parents to be honored in front of other parent volunteers and in front of us. And I think we need sometimes, you know, to remember that we thank not only those that show up there, but all the parents that we see, you know, volunteering their time because not all of them were at the tea. I left there a little early to go to the Drumline Banquet up at the PDC. Talented kids that we have. We also have a talented teacher. And I'm sorry, I just, his name? Paul Locke. He's a magician. And if you haven't seen him do his magic, he is amazing, amazing. So I don't know how we can, if there's something we can do to, you know, highlight him for the board or whatever, but it is, he is fabulous. Also went to the Making Hope Happen Gala. I really appreciate Nikki Detman and Erin Brinker and all of the Making Hope Happen crew and all that they do to put that event on. Bought a bunch more, Dave and I bought, my husband and I bought a bunch more student art again this year because we love buying that student art. My house is now populated with ceramics and paintings from our students. But I love every minute of them. It makes me smile. They are, some of those kids are so extremely talented. Attended the Link Scholarship Breakfast where we had several students who received scholarships. That's another, I love the fact that there are so many community organizations that are trying to help our kids succeed and giving them a little bit, a little leg up in, how much? How much? How much?
About $70,000?
Yeah, so that's just amazing. He meant, let's see, employee appreciation, that was great. I went to, and the MONI Awards. I can't believe how many teachers are retiring this year. The list is incredible. It makes me nervous because there aren't a whole lot of people out there. But as other districts, you know, lose theirs because they're doing, they're doing reduction in force, we'll be happy to have you come work here. I was, after our CTE presentation, Ms. Huff from Pacific High School invited me to join Bradley Elementary School on their Pacific Programs Tour that they do for the sixth graders at Bradley Elementary School. So it was an opportunity to see some of their CTE programs there. And, oh my gosh, it was just amazing from the bakery. They're going to have a bakery and coffee shop there. The avid program. We got to see Ms. Moore and all of her yearbook and all of her creative arts programs that she does. But I got to go, I haven't been in the Transportation Center since the ribbon cutting. And I got to see, walk in there, and walking in is right near the front of a Mack truck, of a diesel truck in that space just blew my mind. And I took so many pictures because I just couldn't believe it. Also, thank you to our classified employees. I began in this district as an instructional aide. And so I know, you know, what the work of our classified employees, from our custodians, who are clerks, everyone. I just want to say thank you to you all. Graduation at Sierra High School, congratulations to all our graduates. Can't wait to all the other ones that will all be attending in this next week. The AEC will be in Anaheim next year. So it'll be close by for us. It'll be easiest for us to get to. They're going to have a little different program for the students next year, so I'm excited for that. I'm really looking forward to next year with our student board members. I was very sad to see some of our kiddos go. I've spent some good time with them and they're just so talented and incredible. But I want to put a couple of dates on your calendars. The installation for our 24, 25 student board members will be on July 2nd. And then we're doing our retreat August 1st and 2nd. So I'll be getting back to you, hopefully, hoping that you guys can come at least have lunch if you're willing to do a training session, if you're available. And you'll let me know that. We can calendar you in if you're willing to do that. I know not everybody's schedule does that, but we want to do that. I have two things in my 12 seconds. One, I'd like to, I asked in an email, but I would like to agenda is the LEED Conference. I don't know if I need consensus for that. That's the one at Cal State that Dr. Mario does that we've been sponsoring. And we have a ton of kids that go to that. So sponsorship. I sent an email.
You're over now, time.
And then the last thing that I have is, there is so much coming at us right now. And it's, we get it so haphazard and then like we'll say yes to something, but then something comes in. I don't know if there's a better way to just try to get everything, especially at the end of the year when there are so many different opportunities. But, you know, yeah, yeah, it's just, it's challenging right now to try to be, you know, and then something comes in and something is there. So I'm just, I don't, it was just sort of something for a future reference because I'm not really quite sure. Because I know we don't always get them, but like, you know, the electrical workers today. And then, you know, some of us get things for school sites, some didn't. Lincolnshire Career Day I got was fabulous, but then there was others that I didn't get. So it would just be nice if, I don't know how we can help do that. But, yeah, okay. Well, if we can get access to it, so we know.
We have a, we have a large district with events internal, external. If you want to, you can go to two or three events every day throughout the whole school year. Your choice. I don't think you're ever going to be able to know all of them. But I think it, I think it works. You know what I mean? You can wear yourself out. Thank you very much. 13.2 Superintendent and Staff?
Thank you, President Tillman. Just want to share some evidence and examples of our SBCUSD 2030 vision. So as mentioned today, as part of promoting active family participation, we had a wonderful volunteer tea event at the Doubletree here in San Bernardino. And Sandra and the Parent Engagement Group did a great job of recognizing all the volunteers. Next slide. Another goal that we have is to have attractive school facilities and to highlight all of the brilliance that exists right here in San Bernardino. I had the opportunity to share the new mural at Henry Elementary with Dr. Henry. And I think I shared with you, she had no idea we had done the mural and she was so touched. She got teary-eyed in that moment, so she wanted to take a picture. But this is another example of our school district making sure that our facilities are the jewels of the community. Next slide. And then as part of our vision, we talk about making sure that we have two-way dialogue with our community. So I want to thank Robert Porter for inviting me to the I Love San Bernardino Radio Show with Cinder Weber, where we got an opportunity to talk about the work that we are doing between now and 2030. And Ms. Weber had an opportunity to talk about the work that we do where our Native American Indians. So we appreciate that opportunity for that two-way dialogue. Next slide. And then as was mentioned, we attended the SBTA MONI Awards. And before I get to the little video, I want to do a little shout out to those teachers that did win the MONI Awards. Ms. Adrian Cook from Hillside, Raymond Long from Thompson, Cecilia Torres Escobedo from Chavez Middle School, Jade Smith from San Andreas High School, Christina Leroy, who's our speech and hearing teacher, and Connie Jones from Chavez Middle School. They reflect the teachers who are developing healthy children and they take pride in our community. So I want to congratulate them on their MONI Awards. And one thing that I love about this event is when they call the retirees up and they have this tradition of ringing the bell. So if we can show the ringing of the bell, please.
One, ring your bell. Get ready. Three, two, one.
So as was mentioned, just the folks that showed up there was, I believe, 550 years of combined teaching experience. So congratulations to all our folks that are retiring. Next slide. And then we started off the graduation tour of this year with the Illin Empire, or excuse me, Adult Education Graduation Class of 2024, where we are cultivating students that thrive in school, career, and life. And they did a really nice job with that graduation. Next slide. And then as was mentioned, we attended the Headdress Ball. We were excited to have at our table Dr. Wyatt's wife and Mr. Tillman's wife. They had a really nice time. We had a good time getting to know them. So thank you for them coming here. But this is where student success is bolstered through collaboration with our local service groups. So we want to thank the Assistance League. And Felicia did a wonderful job as the moderator of the event. And Sandra did a wonderful job, as you can see, with her headdress there, representing the 1960s. So great job, Sandra, on that. Next slide. Another example of cultivating students that thrive, we had Sierra High School graduation yesterday. And that's a good-looking group right there, right? I'm talking about the ones on top. The ones on the bottom are pretty good too, right? But it's always pride for me and a great sense of joy to be with our team together to celebrate the fruits of the efforts of everyone across the district. So next slide. And then congratulations, another school of distinction. Today we found out that Rodriguez Prep won the Educational Results Partnership Honor Roll of Top Performing Schools. So congratulations to Rodriguez Prep. Next slide. And I want to thank, again, another example of two-way dialogue with the community. I want to thank Pastor Beckley and the Ecclesia Church for allowing me the opportunity to share the multi-year vision with our community. It was very well received and the folks were very appreciative that the district was willing to be there. As a matter of fact, my wife loved the Uh, as a matter of fact, my wife loved the service and uh said to me, we will be returning there uh, you know, several times during the year. We don't need an invitation, but uh the music was great and the sermon was great. So we appreciate it. So thank you to Pastor Beckley. And I want to end uh with first recognizing and thanking all of our classified employees as part of Classified Employees Appreciation Week. I say this everywhere we go, we have the best darn employees in the state. I'm going to state that again. We have the best employees in the state. And our classified employees do a great job and are a big part of our success. And with that, I want to then end by just thanking everybody for a fantastic twenty twenty three, twenty four school year. And a big congratulations to all of our graduates. Um, our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, our parents, our community members, our union leaders, and you, the board. Working together, we create successes every year. So I just want to thank everyone on a great, great school year and we are looking forward to the next school year. So again, congratulations to twenty twenty four grads. Thank you, President Tillman.
Thank you. Section fourteen, summary of board members' requests.
Good evening. The first request is from President Tillman. Uh, he requested for Mr. Terry Komnik to look into funding of these students enrolled in the subacute program. The second request is from Ms. Rosales Medina. She requested an update on the virtual academy and what they are doing or changing. Some parents cause uh expressed concerns about the direction they are going. Ms. Chuski requested to highlight Mr. Paul Locke. Um, we might need a little bit of clarification in that. And Ms. Chuski also requested consensus to agenda is the lead sponsorship. And that is it.
Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on. Oh, yeah, so about that fifteen point one in memoriam, memorial. Uh, the board would like to recognize and close the board meeting in memory, memory of Deborah S. Johnson, who began her thirty-six year career with the district in nineteen seventy-six as a substitute teacher. A year later, she became a permanent teacher in San Bernardino City of High School District and worked at Fairfax, Warren Springs, and Arrowhead Elementary Schools. In nineteen eighty-six, she transferred to Davidson Elementary School and remained there until her retirement in June of twenty twelve. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. And now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mean adjourn.